Good evening, Council. Tonight is the City Council regular meeting for the city of Sammamish. The date is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 2025. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website, www.sammamish.us/news/events/tv21. City Facebook, www.facebook.com/cityofssammamish.wa. Comcast, Channel 21, within Sammamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, the city website and on YouTube. The YouTube channel is www.youtube.com/chanuucopqqz1msudhagiri. And I'm not going to say that again. Comcast and Comcast Channel 21, again, Sammamish only. And we're going to call the meeting to order. It is 6:34. And will you call the roll?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchow. Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Rehn.
Present.
We also have some staff on the call tonight, including the interim city manager Dave Rudat. We have Andrew Stevens, Anjali Meyer, Mike Kenyon, Melanie Anderson, Lisa Marshall, Cheryl Paston. See who else. Jim Homannick, Rita Bod, Shelby Peralta, David Pyle, and I think that is everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike, you're getting so good at this. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I have a first and a second? Do I have any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Gamblin?
That's correct. I'd like to add an agenda item if I could.
Okay.
The agenda item is to discuss details of the issuance of the concurrency certificate for Phase 1 of the Town Center. I'll second that.
Let me see where that's going to go. We're going to put you under, we're going to make you number...
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, we do get to vote on that. But hang on for a second. Is there anybody else who has anything else? Okay, going back to what is on the table. Motion at hand, which is to add the concurrency certificates of the Town Center. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, 5-2. Okay, so now back to...
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Procedural question, if this is out of order, this is Councilmember Ritchie. Just so we're going forward, I'm going to just make a suggestion. Would it be wise for us to do a roll call vote rather than just a ayes and nays without seeing each other in person? It seems kind of like a blob, right? I mean, maybe go down the list. Does that make sense to do it that way? Councilmember so-and-so, councilmember so-and-so, and just run, I mean, there's only seven of us, so I figure it might make sense to, you know, how do you vote, that kind of thing?
No, I agree. Okay, we can do that. Thank you. Okay, now back to the original motion, which is the approval of the agenda. So it's the approval of the agenda with the noted change. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, 6-1. And I believe that was Councilmember Stewart.
That was.
See, I'm getting the voices. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next we have emergency management. This is my favorite part, so do tell us what we need to know. You've had a busy week.
Yes, thank you. My name is Andrew Stevens, Emergency Manager with Eastside Fire and Rescue, Emergency Manager for the city of Sammamish. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and the city of Sammamish's response and recovery operations. Now, as of today, the number of confirmed cases of coronavirus globally was over 3.6 million, an increase of over 1 million since my last briefing at the last City Council. The U.S. has roughly 1.2 million cases of COVID-19 and resulting in over 70,000 fatalities. The number of cases in the U.S. is greater than the number of the next four highest countries combined. And to put that into further perspective, it's been more than a month since the U.S. has had a day where fewer than 1,000 individuals have died from coronavirus. Washington State is reporting 15,594 cases of COVID-19, and King County, as of today, was reporting 6,621. City of Sammamish has shown to have 65 positive cases of coronavirus and three fatalities. However, Sammamish is still one of the lowest per capita rates of infection in the county. And due to the robust mitigation measures enacted by the city early in this event, we can proudly say that we've been able to maintain the continuity of nearly all government functions without a single instance of employee contraction of COVID-19. Now, across the nation, state, and even locally, people are growing restless with some of the measures required to combat this virus. So please allow me to remind everyone that this outbreak is far from over. While some states have issued public health orders, such as Washington's Stay Home, Stay Healthy order, are beginning to see a slight decline in case volumes, 25 states across the nation are seeing daily increases of positive cases. The total count, total case count across the nation is still expanding and growing by 2% to 4% each day. In many areas where social distancing restrictions have been lifting entirely, we are seeing a resurgence of the virus. Rural counties, who did not even have a single reported case in mid-April, are now experiencing explosive community transmission and are now hotspots for several new cases of the virus. Now, last week, the governor extended the Stay Home, Stay Healthy order through the end of May. He also outlined a phased process for reopening certain aspects of the community, such as outdoor recreation and some business. The process outlined in the governor's Safe Start Plan assesses our community's resiliency against the virus through analyzing the readiness of our healthcare systems, testing availability, availability to conduct widespread contact tracing, and the level of risk to vulnerable populations. The governor also stated that there would be a period of at least three weeks in between the phases of reopening to allow for times to assess their success or make adjustments if they fail. While in the beginning, while we are beginning to see these measures already take effect through the reopening of some outdoor recreation, such as state parks, fishing, and golf, I urge Sammamish residents to approach this transition slowly. Please do not look for the exceptions of what is allowed and rush out to meet them. This virus is still very much present in our community and county, and these activities are not worth yours or anyone else's health and safety. The city has always taken a proactive stance to ensure the protection of its residents and employees. For example, in last week's public address, the mayor outlined why some restrictions to city parks' use and access would still be enforced even as state parks reopened. Now, understanding the threat of COVID-19 will last for many more months and that the recovery will last much longer, we've been focusing on steps to facilitate that recovery process over the past several weeks. We are in constant communication with state and county partners concerning funding to support costs associated with COVID-19 response, as well as the long-term recovery of the community. Understanding the various funding streams that the city may access, what costs are eligible for reimbursement, and ensuring all those expenses are properly documented throughout the duration of this incident is one of our top priorities. Other measures being taken include the continued support of businesses within the city through tools such as Puget Sound Small Business Map and the efforts you have all taken this evening to support community organizations active in supporting those impacted by the outbreak. So I want to thank everyone for their continued support and compliance with all public health recommendations. It is truly making a critical difference to so many. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do we have questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Oh, great, I see it. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Appreciate the update. Last time, we had asked if we could get the reporting out from the Emergency Operations Center, and I don't think we've seen that, so I was wondering if we could get that.
Yes, we can, I'd like to clarify exactly what type of reporting you're looking for because at the same time, I was believing that these reports were somewhat serving that purpose, or would you like to see greater Sammamish statistics?
Well, I'd just like to know, I mean, maybe I'm the only one, but I don't know what kind of information you have at the Emergency Operations Center, so it'd be great to get a written report that kind of says, here's the stats and here's the information we have and get that so that we have it.
We can put something together.
Yeah, we can get a written report. That'd be great. Thank you.
Councils, or anybody else? Okay, hearing none? Thank you. Great report. Okay, next up, we have got public comment. And once again, pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 2025, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment, written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@mandersen@ssammamish.us and citycouncil@ssammamish.us. Verbal comment, up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted, and it must be done by 6:30 the day of the meeting. The phone number is 1-571-317-3122, and the access code is 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. And I'm going to pass it over to Mike, who is going to put our callers through.
Thank you, Mayor. I see we have eight people who have called in to provide public comment tonight. They are all on mute right now, as the mayor mentioned, and I will unmute callers in the order in which they join the meeting. When you are unmuted, you will have three minutes to provide comment. At the end of the three minutes, you will hear a beeping tone indicating that you are out of time. And please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in, for the record. I will now go ahead and unmute the first caller. All right, the first caller is unmuted, and you may go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Moran, City Council members and staff. My name is Sam Rodabaugh. I am a real estate and land use attorney in Bellevue. I am also a longtime resident of Sammamish and currently residing in the Clohauny neighborhood. From October 3rd, 2017 to December 15th, 2018, the city imposed rolling moratorium on various forms of development for the stated purpose of studying traffic concurrency, a period of 438 days. Those moratoria culminated in the adoption of a traffic concurrency ordinance that pushed the envelope of what was previously considered permissible under our State Growth Management Act, or GMA. As you are aware, the GMA requires the city to accept its pro-rata fair share of the region's growth. Under the GMA, the question isn't whether the city will grow, it's how state-mandated growth will be accommodated. For those of us that practice in the land use arena, the Growth Management Hearing Board's recent order invalidating the city's traffic concurrency ordinance came as no surprise. I was surprised, however, that the decision is now being used to justify another moratorium, currently of unlimited breadth, to study the same issue, traffic concurrency. As of today, since October 3rd of 2017, the city has been under some form of moratorium for almost 50% of the time. A city cannot function, let alone comply with its obligations under the GMA, under those circumstances. I am pleased that the city is considering narrowing the scope of the moratorium tonight. Of the options under consideration, I would urge the council to adopt Option 1, as it is more narrowly tailored towards those projects that will likely create the biggest impact for traffic. Projects that already have a certificate of traffic concurrency, such as preliminary plaits, or traditional infill development of existing residential lots should be allowed to proceed. In the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, the construction industry is suffering mightily. Enacting a blanket moratorium kicks the industry while it's down. As you know, the city doesn't know the ultimate fiscal impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, but much of the Department of Community Development is financed exclusively via permit revenue, as such funds may be, must be earmarked for that purpose under RCW 8202020. Unless the city is planning layoffs for those staff, Option 1 is the most narrowly tailored moratorium that is also likely to lead to the greatest revenue to continue to support those staff. I urge you to adopt Option 1, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, I will go ahead and unmute the second caller. Second caller, you are unmuted, and maybe can you public comment? Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Who's number two?
I think you unmuted caller number three, not caller number two, Mike.
It's the, yeah, the numbering is, there's no caller number one, so the next caller is caller number three. Caller number three, can you hear us?
I'm on the line, but I don't know what number I am.
Oh, that's you. We can hear you. You may begin your public comment.
Okay. Hello, City Council, hope you're doing well. My name is Jan Bird. I live at 3310221st Avenue Southeast in Sammamish. And I'm here to support the city staff recommendation that city council authorize construction contracts scheduled A to C for Part B of Big Rock Park. Mary Pickett gave the property to the city for the use and enjoyment of its residence back in December 21st, 2016. And as it is with the proposed construction starting in 2020, it's likely not built until 2021 at the earliest. This December, it'll be four years of city ownership, and if nothing is done this summer, it'll still sit closed to the public. So it's important not to delay it any longer. What I don't have information on is the impact that the COVID-19 virus is going to have on the city's budget. Now, if that becomes an issue that you have with this, I suggest at the very least you open Section B without all the improvements. You already have the maintenance staff who made trail improvements, planned states should be pedestrian entrance from Part A to Part B. That should be an easy thing to do. If I remember right, there's a fence around the treehouse could be kept in place. Why not have the current entrance be the entrance to the park for now and allow residents to hike back into Section B? I've been so grateful during this pandemic they have the availability of the parks and the preserves, and thank you for keeping the bathrooms open. Unfortunately, half of the trails of Evans Creek are now off limits due to the potential for a landslide. Thus, we need more open space available to the public sooner rather than later. Another thing is you could work on the utilities first. You wouldn't want to jeopardize the Sammamish Heritage Society's grant for their reared Freed House on this property if that's what's needed right now. Anyway, the bottom line is something needs to get started to allow the public to use this land. As I mentioned back in 2018, imagine someone giving you a gift for an important occasion, the receiver of the gift telling you, "Thank you, but I'll save it and open it later." Then the next occasion occurs a year later, you give a gift again, get the same response. Imagine how you, the giver of the gift, would feel. I would think if we wait much longer, Mary Pickett is probably going to feel the same. Part of the joy of giving is seeing people enjoying the gift. So if you don't move forward with this project, you're not only depriving citizens of Sammamish with the use of this gift, you're also depriving Mary of the joy of seeing people actually use it. And did you notice on the King County parcel viewer, it says reason for the sale, which of course wasn't a sale, it was a gift, but it says love and affection gift. This is what visiting looks like. Your parks staff has a vision, your parks commissioners have a vision, your citizens have a vision, so now we're inviting City Council to participate in that vision. Let's move forward with this project. We need to do something somehow to at least start opening some of it this year.
Okay, we will move to the next caller. I am unmuting them now. Next caller, go ahead.
Would that be me? I don't have a lineup.
Yes, that is you.
Okay, gosh, it's so hard to tell. All right, my name is Doug Top, and my wife, Michelle, is here with me. We purchased our property in Sammamish off of 211th, just north of Inglewood Hill, in 2007. We have 13 years of been fully engaged in getting our RUE's and building permits approved, but continually fighting challenges. One of the greatest impacts we've had to endure is a two-year drained moratorium from the city of Sammamish. We have extensively expressed our concerns about the unethical and potentially legal nature of the traffic concurrency process. We made it clear about our apprehensions to participate in this process. It was known that April 20th, the challenging of the traffic concurrency was going to be concluded. All factors clearly indicated to us that we should not get involved in traffic concurrency process until such time that it was determined to be safe, legal, and ethical, so we decided to wait until the April 20th for the verdict. We anticipated that the traffic concurrency process would be eliminated, but we did not expect the city to implement a six-month ad hoc moratorium. The situation seems even more confusing because the city is rewarding those participants who actually participated in the traffic concurrency process by allowing them to not be negatively impacted by the six-month moratorium. We questioned why the process was not, you know, immediately suspended when under investigation. We elected not to participate in potentially an unethical and illegal process, and now we are being punished by the six-month imposed moratorium. As stated earlier, we were very local through an extensive series of emails about our concerns associated with the traffic concurrency process and policy. As far as our project, since the issuance of our new tie-base RUE, we are participating with the city of Sammamish in the pre-development process. We are spending an extensive amount of money and engaging all the disciplines to complete our permitting process. Time has run out for us, and we absolutely cannot withstand another delay. We need to get our permits approved and excavation work and house foundations complete prior to the rain season. We strongly urge the City Council to remove this six-month ad hoc moratorium as it applies to our project. Thank you for your consideration.
Just for reference for the upcoming callers, when I unmute you, you should hear an automated voice say unmuted. So the next caller, I will unmute you right now. Please provide your name and the city you live in, for the record. You have three minutes.
Jeff Peterson, Carnation, Washington. Thank you for that clarity. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I submitted a letter last week regarding the emergency moratorium being discussed later this evening. I appreciate the consideration council and staff have given to this issue over the past several days. I see that council has three options to refine this in the agenda bill before tonight. I wrote my letter in keeping with language from prior moratoriums. However, I believe simple is more appropriate in this instance and support Option 1 or 2 over a long, detailed, and inevitably incomplete list like what I provided. I also wanted to recognize council and staff for taking these steps quickly, which is truly important for those working on vested projects who did not get a paycheck today and really need to have one tomorrow. I noted that tonight's agenda shows that funding for St. Vincent, Hope Link, and other charities needed to feed and provide housing is being exhausted in this crisis. We cannot, we look forward to bringing people safely back to work, and that process cannot even begin without permits. I urge council to refine their moratorium tonight.
Okay, we will move to the next caller. Again, you will hear a voice say unmuted when I have unmuted you. So I'm unmuting you now. You have three minutes. Please provide your name and the city you live in, for the record.
Hi, Tom Hornish from Sammamish. As you know, I'm a former City Council member and a licensed attorney and member of the Washington State Bar. After rereading the GMHB decision in the recent Jerran case multiple times, I firmly believe that that decision clearly vindicated the City Council majority regarding the new V-Over-C-LOS methodology and levels that were established in 2018. But the necessary steps to legally implement the new LOS were admitted, and using development regulations was not the proper procedure to implement it, contrary to the city attorney's opinion he stated on September 11th, 2018. My comment tonight is to address and question some of the results from these misdirections and the misopinions from the city attorney and other staff members, resulting in what I consider to be a major travesty and misguiding and, dare I say, undue influencing the elected official's decision. For example, the issuance of the FCA Phase 1 concurrency certificate in August 2019. The issuance of such a certificate is an administrative function, but is clearly erroneous, given that it was relied on using an unfunded transportation project, the product of misleading staff influence or misguided misdirection to council. On August 20th, 2019, during a special meeting of council, Cheryl Paston, his acting public works director, admitted that the unfunded placeholder Sahali Project, since it was on the tip, would be considered to be built in six years in staff's consideration, whether or not to issue concurrency certificates, including the FCA Phase 1 concurrency certificate. This was after a clear majority, if not all, of the elected council members had stated numerous times before the tip was passed that that project was on the tip, it was not the project that was going to be completed, and no funds would be committed to that project as shown on the tip. Yet it was being used in the testing for issuing concurrency certificates. And this was after the city attorney had advised council that adopting the tip would have no impact on traffic concurrency. Note also that during a Jerran hearing, the attorney representing the city also stated that the Sahali project was removed from the tip by council after the tip had been passed because the project was considered to be unfunded. And this was all after, during a June 18th, 2019 City Council meeting, the city attorney and staff pushed council to adopt a tip that included that project, promising that it's just a planning document and is separate from traffic concurrency. If you go back and review the video from that meeting, you will see that discussion and opinion from the city attorney, and that the proposed tip was voted down numerous times, and it took multiple attempts for council to pass the tip, after basically what I consider was misdirection, misguided, and exerting duress late at night from the city attorney and staff, saying council must approve the tip tonight. In fact, I sent an email in August 2019 to the city attorney and my fellow council members explaining how the city's code allows for staff to revoke the issuance of a concurrency certificate if it's been issued in error or new information has been learned since its issuance. But the city attorney's opinion was that it was not possible. So my comment and suggestion tonight is that I would implore the City Council to consider directing a legal review of all the facts and circumstances surrounding the issuance of... of concurrency certificates after the 2019 tip was adopted, including the SCCA Phase One. This review should include and consider the misdirections, opinions, undue influence from the city attorney and other staff members, and determine the legal status of such concurrency certificates. The integrity of our democratic governmental system of having elected officials actually make their decisions for our citizens, not on misguided staff opinions or advice, even if unintentional, demands it. Thank you.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and unmute the next caller. You are now unmuted. Please state your name and the city you live in for the record.
My name is Jeremy Welch, and I live in Bellevue, Washington. Excuse me. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the city councils for taking our comments tonight. One thing I wanted to do is I wanted to speak about the building moratorium. And I just wanted to share kind of more of a personal story with them as opposed to signing laws. I purchased my property back in 2006, and at that time, my goal was to move to Spanish. I'm not a developer, I'm an individual that's just trying to build his own house. However, since that time, we had the housing downturn. During that time, banks folded, actually the bank that had my building loan and my land loan folded. So I had to go through a lot of hoops to, you know, keep on holding on to the property during that downturn. In the near term, I've been working forward to obtain my RUEs, which I have done, and I continue to work forward to get these permitted. I've taken days off of work to have me and my engineers come up and meet with city workers to make sure that we're getting everything all of our ducks in a row and get lined up. One of the things that was obstacle to us was the traffic concurrency. And after looking at it, we couldn't find out what the traffic concurrency really was. In my particular project, after having spent time moving forward, it seemed like a $5,000 gamble. And when I found out that the $5,000 gamble was going to be reviewed in April, I was advised that I should probably wait to see what would come from this meeting. Now that this has happened, there's a building moratorium, and basically, as it sits now, there's a six-month moratorium. This six-month moratorium may not seem like a big deal for some people, but I'd like to give you again some personal side of this. I've paid my engineers for the work they've done. I've taken off days from work to come meet with the city and their employees to do this. So I have sunk costs that are not being, you know, not being moved forward, not allowing me to get my project done. I'm paying taxes on my property. I've been paying tax on my property since 2006. This building moratorium, if it pushes into October, there'll be no way to do any dirt work or any kind of foundations until spring. So a six-month moratorium can actually turn out to be a year or longer for people who are actually going through this process. I would just like to thank the city council for listening to my concerns, and I would advise them to try to find a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
We have one more caller on the line. I will go ahead and unmute you now. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city you live in for the record.
Honorable city council members and city staff, this is Mary Victor. I've lived in Spanish for the past 20 years, and I do live in the neighborhood of Tamarack. First, let me thank you for the citywide guardrail project. It was noticed, it was done, it made things safer, and it looks really good, so that was passed on consent. Most of my comments are directed toward the moratorium because I understand as I read it, it prohibits permit applications. Thankfully, this includes putting a new single-family home on an existing vacant lot. The city of Spanish has defined historic plats as before 1977 and include Inglewood, which was plotted in 1889, and Tamarack surveyed in 1964 and recorded. And those together have about 100 vacant lots. When multiple projects occur on individual lots, this causes a cumulative effect, traffic, stormwater, and other things like sewer and septic. And council has exempted these, like Spanish Parkway, from concurrency. In a quick review, it looks like the option two tonight might be the best to consider as it still restricts any permit with a traffic concurrency certificate, so a new single-family home would still need to have one. When council restricts building elsewhere in the city, this drives development into Inglewood and Tamarack neighborhoods, which already have multiple overlapping sensitive environmentally critical areas with steep slopes, landslide, erosion hazard, which are all geologically hazardous areas that need to be identified properly and protected. The city is responsible for identifying these areas and protecting them with best available science. This year of 2020, in the city's work plan, council and staff are slated to address urban forestry management, vegetation concerns, and other things that will help protect these critical areas and save trees. Also, transfer of development rights are on the calendar to be discussed, too. This could be something that would help alleviate pressure for development in the historic Inglewood neighborhood and potentially in Tamarack. Please seriously consider my input tonight before you go into executive session for the agenda bill item, which is on pages 44 through 47 of the packet. Also, I wanted to mention that Inglewood and Tamarack lack fundamental services for sewer and stormwater in many places in these historic neighborhoods. There are many old septic systems that exist that are 30-plus years in age that might not be doing too well pre-failure, and some are failing. The city of Spanish should not be looking to continue putting more develop in these areas without adequate facilities, and facilities that would be there at the time of occupancy of any homes. Please do not drive development to these historic areas by restricting to only big projects. Little projects do add together, and they do have adverse cumulative impacts. Thank you.
Okay, we actually have one more caller who joined us just now, so I will go ahead and unmute them. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city you live in for the record.
Thank you, honorable counsel. My name is Andrew McKenzie. I live in Silverdale, and I am an applicant for a short plat alteration in Spanish that has the purpose of restoring a non-building lot to a buildable status. I've gone through literally years of work, hired engineers, purchased a survey, gone through a pre-app meeting, and all of this culminated in a packet of documents that I submitted just days before the moratorium went into effect, only to then be surprised by the fact that the moratorium has gone into effect. And now, even though I submitted my fees to pay for the application, I've heard that the application might not be deemed complete until the fees are received, which seems awfully unfair. The fees are only allowed to be received by mail. There's no way to pay them online or pay them over the phone. And so I feel like the delay that is in the process should not be my fault. I went through the traffic concurrency process. I paid what I consider to be exorbitant fees, over $5,000 for the sole purpose of determining whether a single-family residence can be built. And now here we are with this sudden moratorium. Whatever option the council decides to adopt, or whatever modified version it decides to adopt, I think it would be extremely unfair to halt the progress on applications that have been submitted but not been deemed complete merely because payment had not yet been processed or accepted by the city by the time that the moratorium went into effect. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to thank all the callers that called in this evening. And I think that's all we had, correct? Excellent. Okay, next up, we have unfinished business, and that is our discussion on the human services grant, and I believe that is going to fall to... All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Enrum City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I am your senior management analyst. I am also joined on the phone by Rita Bod, who is our community services coordinator. This agenda item is to discuss grant funding for community organizations who are serving residents through the COVID-19 emergency. This discussion, including data from nonprofits and an associated staff recommendation, was requested by council during their April 21st meeting. I'll start off by saying that we have dozens of nonprofits and other community organizations that are doing really great work in the face of this emergency. And in developing a recommendation for these grants, our focus was really on just those nonprofits who are helping Spanish residents with basic needs specifically. Therefore, the recommendation in your packet tonight includes funding for four nonprofits as follows. The first is St. Vincent de Paul, and the service that they provide is rental assistance, and the recommended grant amount is $14,000. The second is Eastside Friends of Seniors, which would provide phone service to combat isolation for seniors, as well as grocery delivery to seniors in the amount of $14,000. And then we have Isqua Food and Clothing Bank as number three, which provides food to the south end of Spanish, and grocery delivery to all of Spanish. And the recommended grant amount there is $7,500. And then we have Hope Link, which provides food pickup for the north end of Spanish. Again, $7,500 recommendation. So the total there is $43,000. Half of this $43,000 would be funded by unspent 2019 grant funding that was carried forward into 2020. The other half is not currently budgeted, but would come from contingency, but would likely be an eligible expenditure for CARES Act funding, so we could potentially be reimbursed for that piece. These four organizations are among the most Spanish-focused that we could fund through our normal grant program. They serve a big cross-section of our population, providing the most immediately needed services, including food, grocery delivery, rental assistance, and senior support. And these are the services that we feel will make the biggest difference for vulnerable residents in our community at this time. So that's our recommendation for this initial phase of grant support. Staff will continue monitoring data, looking at other funding allocations such as the Seattle Foundation, and also continue to review the CARES Act funding that the city is scheduled to receive to determine where future grant allocations may go in our community. This recommendation that we're providing is just one way to slice the funding. The council may have other thoughts on how it should be allocated. Of course, Rita and I are happy to help answer any questions. Otherwise, I will turn it back over to the mayor for discussion.
Okay, counsel, we've heard what is on the table, so I'm going to open it up for discussion. And do I have anybody who wants to start that? Okay, Councilmember Stewart, followed by Councilmember Malchow, deputy mayor.
Great, thank you so much, Mike and Rita, and thank you, Mayor. I didn't know that you guys had had a meeting with the chair of the Human Services Commission. We also got an email today from the vice chair. And I appreciate that, you know, this is not nothing, but based on the information that we're seeing in these reports, based on the number of people we have in our community, and the fact that there are, you know, there are some people out there who are like me, who are incredibly lucky, where I can do my job from home, and I continue to get a full salary, and I'm doing fine, and I'm very lucky that way. But there are others who are struggling, and they're struggling a lot. We know that we don't have a significant increase in calls around domestic violence or child abuse, but in everything that you read and in all the experts that you talk to, I actually had the ability to talk to someone over the weekend that these are the types of things that go unreported most of the time. And with children not going to school and not going to see their pediatricians, there's a lot less oversight on that. So it's really important that we fund the organizations that know how to deal with these types of crises, especially in a situation where people are, you know, staying home more and not getting out. So I appreciate the initial stab at this. What I think, though, we need to really look at is the fact that we are going to be getting a fairly significant amount of money through the CARES Act, or through the state from the CARES Act, in addition to the fact that just this year alone, we have already earned $271,000 in interest on the funds, the taxpayer funds that we've collected. And since 2016, the money that we have collected and had in our fund balances and our ending fund balances, and these ending fund balances have ranged from $83 million to $106 million, we have earned $4,829,590 since the beginning of 2016. And I just feel like, given that, those are earnings on taxpayer dollars that we've been holding. I feel like we need to do more, we need to do it now, and we may need to do it again later. Our financial picture, based on the meetings that we had, we are in really good shape, especially compared to other cities. Most of our revenue does not come from sales tax, and even though we may see a decline in sales tax revenue, it's not going to be devastating to us. And there are other adjustments that we can make to our budget to completely offset that. And even with our current budget, we still are projected to have a $39 million ending balance. Given that, and given that this is a crisis, I can't think of what else these rainy day funds are for and these ending balances are for. So my recommendation is that we ensure that we are fully funding any gaps that these service providers may have, that they are projecting for this year at this time because we can and because we should. And I would ask that if there's anyone on the council who can share anything more important to spend taxpayer earnings on right now than helping those who need help with food, rent, mortgage, utilities, and even helping to support our local small businesses, I'm open to suggestions on what could possibly be more important at this time.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I appreciate that we got a little bit of insight from the email exchange earlier today relative to the meeting that you had with the chair of the Human Services Commission. I do have some questions just about, I guess, the context of those conversations and, you know, any data that you obtained from, you know, namely the Isqua Food and Clothing Bank as well as Hope Link, relative to numbers that have reached out to them, specifically maybe from Spanish. I don't know if they delineate their numbers that way, but can you give us a flavor of what, I'm assuming there's information that you obtained from them? And then the other two that were suggested, which were all how many people that they have heard from? And then Eastside Friends of Senior, if you can maybe just give us an overview?
Shall I pipe in, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Rita.
Okay, hi, good evening, everyone. This is Rita Gard, community services coordinator. So deputy mayor, it sounds like, so if you look in your packet, we actually have a sort of more of a breakdown of numbers. However, the actual reporting differs from each provider. So the Isqua Food and Clothing Bank, we know, have had an increase in clients, as has Hope Link, but they haven't been able to actually give us specific Spanish data. They're not being, you know, they are not able to process that. So we know that they've had an uptick, but as far as numbers of Spanish residents being in that uptick, we actually don't know the specifics. St. Vincent de Paul, as you sort of read down, so for the other organizations, St. Vincent de Paul and Isqua Community Services, they have both received extra requests for funds. Lifewire, looking at the data comparing this quarter to last quarter, it looks like we do have almost double the amount of reporting this quarter as opposed to last quarter. However, the caveat there is that there was an issue with data collection by Lifewire, and so we don't know if we're comparing apples to apples because they amended their data collection system from last quarter. As far as Eastside Friends of Seniors, they've kind of morphed their service units. They did have a lot of volunteer transportation. However, with COVID and the restrictions of travel, they're only using transportation for vital, critical medical appointments. So they expect the volunteer transportation to increase once COVID restrictions are lifted. However, they are doing more shopping, like porch drop-off delivery, and they've also provided a new telephone support system where they're connecting with all the seniors on their database. on their database to find out if they want to be called like two or three times a week by volunteers. So that's...
Can I clarify that, by volunteers or by paid staff members?
So they do have an actual, they have two staff members, and they also do have volunteers. So they, the actual staff members, I know, coordinate the volunteers, but I do know the staff members are very boots-on-the-ground, so they would definitely be calling as well.
Okay.
And I know that they've had, they've connected with over 200 seniors. Yeah.
Okay. So I guess my, my take on, you know, what this council should be doing, I appreciate the recommendation that's coming forward. Whether or not we should or could be doing more, I think the CARES Act funding that this city obtained is definitely earmarked for COVID-19. And while this does likely fall under that umbrella, we just don't know what our future looks like. And I think if this council needs to, we can revisit this, you know, every four to six weeks or whatever we deem appropriate, based on information coming from the field, whether it, you know, information from Lifewire, whether it's information from the Isqwa Food and Clothing Bank, and react fairly quickly to those needs. So I am, I am okay with the recommendation that has come forward, and I will formally move that recommendation of the carryover of $21,500 plus the additional $21,500 for a total of $43,000 right now.
I'll second that.
Do we have more discussion, having a motion on the floor?
More discussions.
Hang on, I've got, let me look at, put my cheaters on, and I have Councilmember Richie, followed by Councilmember Ross.
Hey there, yeah, Councilmember Richie here. I support the motion. I would like to ask that we, I'd like to amend the motion to include several of the points made by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Commission Member Ayers. Essentially, the ones that jumped out to me that I think we could work with, that I think are achievable, would be establish an expert panel, and then the create a meaningful financial assistance fund. Those two, to me, seem like things we could do that would kind of spread from there in terms of what we could do. So I would like to make an amendment to the motion to include the creation of a meaningful financial assistance fund and an expert panel.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion on the floor. And so, and it is an amendment to the original motion. So we have to deal with the amendment first, and it is to add a, Jason, I'm going to let you repeat your amendment.
Yeah, the creation of a meaningful assistance fund, and I'll briefly read what's in the email that we all got, just for the public. The city of Isqwa has established a $100,000 fund, dispersments and $500 increments to help address gaps in rent, utilities, et cetera. Using this to lead a, as a leading metric based on population size, suggesting we should create about $175,000 fund for this purpose. I'm not suggesting we create that fund of $175,000, I'm just creating, suggesting that we create the fund and figure out from there using the Human Services Commission. And then an expert panel, based on the situation, fast-changing and predictable. Essentially, I think what they're predicting here, what they're suggesting here is to part assistance in the panel, include representative local nonprofits, providers, social workers, medical doctors, and mental wellness providers, the folks on the ground that might figure out where best to, where the help may be best needed or best applied. So establish an expert panel, create a meaningful assistance, financial assistance fund. That's the amendment. Thank you.
Nope. First of discussion on it, I believe, is deputy mayor.
I think you skipped Chris.
I think he was next in line after Jason for the regular, but we can ask, Councilmember Ross.
No, I, I will, I wanted to speak on the original
Yeah.
motion in council. Let's flush out the amendment.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so deputy mayor, I've got you for the amendment.
Okay, thank you. So relative to the expert panel, these comments came from a revered member of our Health and Human Services Commission, but I'm not sure that I understand the purpose of this expert panel, because in his own words in the email, it says it's to monitor the situation. But I guess I'm confused, because I, I guess I perceive the staff members that we have are kind of doing that for us. I know even our mayor has made some phone calls to kind of check in on things, and we have an emergency manager while not dealing with maybe this specifically, I think certainly has some intel relative to that. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, the details of convening a panel requires additional staff oversight, and then it's another electronic meeting. I just wonder if this is the right time to be convening an expert panel. And then relative to the financial assistance fund, you know, what we have, at least in the original motion and the recommendation based on what came forward in our packet, has some of that assistance built into it through St. Vincent de Paul Society? So I think, and again, back to, we can come back and revisit this at any time if we need to in the future, based on how, what our expenditures look like in the future relative to COVID-19. I think my real concern is going above and beyond the recommendation, at least right now, is that we haven't studied anything over and above this right now as far as the budgetary impact, and we have no idea what the future looks like. There could be another resurgence of this virus come the fall and winter. And if it does, I don't know that we are going to be looking to the federal government for additional funding. So I think we just need to be conservative in our approach. And again, I think, you know, baby steps, if we need to come back and revisit this in four to six weeks because there is additional need in the community, we have the flexibility to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, followed by Councilmember Gamlin.
Well, I couldn't agree with the deputy mayor more that we, we need to be prepared for a resurgence in the fall. And what that means is that we need to ensure that these organizations have everything they need to, to be prepared, not just to be helping people right now, but for the fall. If they don't have the funds that they need, and they have to start reducing staff, then we're going to be in even more dire circumstances come the fall. Again, I appreciate that we don't know exactly what our future looks like, but we all had a meeting with the finance department and the city manager. We walked through the finances, and our financial picture is actually in quite good shape. There are, there are a few areas, and I'd be happy to walk through those, where we expect that we will come up a bit short, but the areas where we will come up short are relatively small. I mean, we're talking about maybe a couple million dollars, and there are things that we can cut, like our, our overlay project that we could push out by a year that would, that would nearly wipe out any shortfalls that we have just with that one item, that's like two and a half million dollars right there. So there are things we can and should be looking at to do to ensure that we are being fiscally responsible. But the most fiscally responsible thing we can do right now is to help our community. So I fully support establishing an assistance fund to, to fund the organizations that are helping our citizens with the essential services, including rental assistance, rent assistance and utility assistance in addition to food. And I think that if our former chair and now vice chair of the Human Services Commission is saying that we need to pull in some additional folks for this expert panel to get some additional details, because this is a new situation and we really need some additional information on the ground, I think it's worth putting that together and finding out what the Human Services Commission needs to make that happen. The fundamental job of government is, is to help people in a time of crisis and to ensure public safety. And people who don't have food and who don't have shelter cannot be safe. Food and housing insecurity is a real problem. Domestic violence and child abuse, these are real problems, and we need to make sure that we are taking care of our citizens and reaching out. Other cities are doing so much more, and we're not even talking about helping our local businesses yet. So I really think that we need to consider this. This amendment isn't even asking for any additional funds, it's asking that we convene this panel and we, and we set up a shell for a fund, and once the experts come back and tell us how much is needed, we can come back and fund that. But we're slated to get $1.9 million from the CARES Act, and again, we have a budget surplus at this point in time. And I think that if we're not willing to spend it on those who are most in need, then I don't know what we're, I don't know what we're going to spend that on. I still haven't heard anyone who could tell me anything that's more important than helping those who are most in need during this crisis.
Okay, so looking at that, I'm actually going to comment on this one. We had a mayor's virtual lunch today, and so to say that everybody's doing so much more, actually, I got to listen to what all the cities are doing. And I told them what we were going to be doing tonight, and we're actually kind of right in step with what all the cities are doing. We're also in a really good spot from the standpoint that we're one of the only cities on the east side that is not laying off people and not doing furlough. And, and we also need to also be very careful of, none of the cities are, have, have said they're going to be able to do anything with that CARES money other than pay their bills to the city. They're not, they're, none of them thought they were going to be able to use any of it for human services. If they did, it was going to be a very small amount. So I'm just really surprised when I hear comments of, we've got all this money. We've got police, we've got fire, we've got, which have been spending a lot more time than they normally do, because we've got people out and about much more than we normally do. So I think we need to be very cautious when we make those sorts of comments. Okay, that being said, we have got a motion and a second on discussion on the table. And Jason, you want the, this one, do you want all the votes tonight to be?
I don't know. It was just my suggestion that we try to do it a little bit different, because it seemed like we were all kind of chiming it together.
All right, let's do it. Okay, so I'm going to call out and then just say yes or no. So this is going to be to the amendment. So deputy mayor, are you in favor or not of the amendment?
Nay.
Councilmember Gamlin.
Nay.
Councilmember Richie.
Yay.
Councilmember Ross.
Nay.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yay.
Councilmember Trine.
Nay. Sorry, my mic.
Okay. And then myself is a nay. Okay, now we're back to the original motion and second on the floor.
I'd like to make another amendment, please.
Okay.
I'd like to ask that we put this item on the agenda for every regular council meeting until the state of emergency is lifted.
Second.
So that we can revisit it every, every two weeks.
Call for the question.
I just made a motion. I'm allowed to speak to my motion, Councilmember Trine.
Okay, I'm going to ask that we keep comments very concise, because we're, we're starting to, we're starting to have platforms here, and it's getting very lengthy. So I'm going to ask that we keep comments very concise, and I'm going to have Councilmember Stewart speak to her motion.
I'm simply reiterating what several councilmembers said, which is we can revisit this, and I'm just asking that we revisit it every two weeks.
Call for the question.
You have to take a vote for that, so you might as well just let this play out. It will be faster.
Oh, my God, just put that in my office.
Any other, any other discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none.
Did we have a second? Did we have a second on that?
Yes, we did have a second. So we're going to go down the row.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to go down the row. Councilmember Malcho.
Nay.
Councilmember Gamlin.
Nay.
Councilmember Richie.
Yay.
Councilmember Ross.
Nay.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yay.
Councilmember Trine.
Nay.
And I'm going to say nay. However, I would ask the city manager if we can, you can bring this back at the first meeting of every month?
Just notification.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're back to the original motion.
Call the question.
I'd like to speak first, please.
Okay.
I'm in, in the queue.
Okay, somewhere in that queue, you were right, you were back there somewhere. Councilmember Ross.
Yeah. Yeah, I absolutely support the recommendation from staff for the $43,000 allocation for the agencies identified. What I did want to emphasize is there's so much misrepresentation of the budget, and especially spoken tonight, so I need to make sure that the public understands we, we are operating at a cash deficit on our budget, so we're not creating surpluses. And what's referred to as surplus is fund balances. Most of the fund balance is earmarked for traffic improvements in infrastructure, not operating. And we've maintained a balance, to get through the next two-plus years, we would have to draw from existing funds, which is less than $20 million, about $3 million in that range as council issued 10% reserve of revenues required. So we only have about two, two and a half years of fund balances to cover our budgeted deficits. So in no shape or form are we in a surplus operating position, and we got to be very careful how we examine the budget. I'm not going to get in more detail than that, but it's being misrepresented that we do not have a budget pot of gold to draw from for operations. Thank you.
Call for the question.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ross, and calling for the question. I'm going to go through the row. Here we go again. Councilmember, this is to call on the original motion. Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Richie.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yay.
Councilmember Trine.
Yes, aye.
And I'm a nay. And council, I have asked that this come back to the council with an update at the first meeting of each month, so that we can, we can track it and keep it, an update to us of where we're in need, and so we're updated on a regular basis, because I agree that needs to happen. Okay, so I forgot to do something, we're going to go backwards on something here. We need to go back and we need to do the consent. Yes. We did, we did. Okay, so we need to go backwards, and this is my fault, I forgot to do the consent calendar.
Hello?
Does it move? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda is the executive session. The executive session is to discuss pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda is the executive session. The executive session is to discuss pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, one aye, and to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, aye. Aye, aye, aye. Okay, and let's see, the time is 7:42. How much time? 45? Okay, so I'm going to say for one hour so we don't have to worry about coming back out. And yes, so it is for discussion, I did for this one and this one. Okay, it's for discussion of the development of the moratorium. And we'll be back in one hour. Extend executive session. Executive session will be extended for 20 minutes. That'll take us two. Five minutes after nine. Thank you. Council, we will be back at 9:05, which is the time that we announce that we'll be back from executive session. Okay, council, welcome back. Okay, next up is our discussion on the development moratorium. And looking at our list here, who wants to start us off on that discussion?
I can. I just can't get to the chat fast enough.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, why don't you start us off?
Okay, so I'll just start by making a motion, which is closely related to option two, which is to rewrite the moratorium to only prohibit new concurrency certificates with the addition of an exemption for permits and approvals for education service uses as defined by 21A.15 and 21A.20.
Second.
Then I hear a second. Who was that? Was that Councilmember Ross?
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion. Any second on the floor, discussion?
I'd like to add an amendment to that.
Actually, I want to speak to my message.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart, I'm just not seeing anything in the box here. So Councilmember Stewart.
I can get to it. Karen, can I speak to my motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. Thank you. So option two is the most closely related to the reason we put the moratorium on. It allows us to continue to work on what we need to relative to the growth hearings board decision. And the exemption listed in there is for schools. I believe that schools are a necessary facility to move forward, and they most certainly don't generate new trips. They might change where trips go, but they are not generating new trips. Schools are simply servicing the people that are already here.
Okay, then Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I agree. A couple of weeks ago, when we discussed this, this is really exactly what I was hoping for, was to focus it on the issuance of new concurrency certificates only. I would like to move that we further, or that we amend the motion by adding language that would exempt a singular, single-family home, so lots that, individual lots for single-family homes. Guess that one's going to die on the vine.
I'm not seeing anything with that.
Call the question.
Hearing no second to that, then we're going to go back to the original motion. And are there any other comments on the original motion? Hearing none. We're going to do roll call on the vote. Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Nay.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Trine.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Six, one vote. Thank you. Okay, great job, guys. I thought that was going to take longer than that. Okay. Moving on for new business. First thing we've got up is Big Rock Park, Site B.
Should I take that?
Yes, that is you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. This is Anjali Meier, interim director of the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department, and here tonight to present the bid award for Big Rock Park, Site B, Phase One Improvements. We had brought this item in front of City Council in the fall of 2018, Big Rock Park Phase One Improvements, in front of City Council in the fall of 2018, when council approved a design contract for these improvements. And at that time, we had also noted at the end of a feasibility study for this project that the total cost would be in the neighborhood of about $3.4 million. We've spent the last year with the design and permitting for this project and bid it earlier this year and have tonight for you the results of that bid, and that is Agenda Item Eight. We also have Agenda Item Nine, which is an authorization for construction management services for this project that is closely linked to Agenda Item Eight. So with the city manager's permission, we are going to go ahead and present the staff reports for both Agenda Items first and then open it up to council questions. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Shelby Parault, project manager, who will present staff reports for both Agenda Items Eight and Nine.
Okay, great. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mr. Interim City Manager. Can, Mike, can you just confirm you can hear me on my headphones?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So this evening, the recommendation is for City Council to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Active Construction, Inc. for Phase One Improvements at Big Rock Park, Site B, for schedules A, B, and C, administer a 10% construction contingency, and authorize total project costs in an amount not to exceed $3.431 million. This is a construction contract for Phase One Improvements at Big Rock Park, Site B. This project will construct all necessary improvements to open the park to the public. These include approximately 300 lineal feet of street drainage improvements, a large turnaround for EBA fire access, construction of a 12-stall parking lot, improvements associated with the prefabricated restroom installation, extensive septic, utility, and stormwater infrastructure, and pedestrian circulation. Additive alternate work includes electrical upgrades to the treehouse and ADA access to the existing treehouse and rear house. The project was advertised for bid on February 4, 2020. Bids were opened on March 4, and a total of two bids were received. The responsible bidder was determined by the lowest total bid, which is the sum of all bid schedules. Active Construction, Inc. submitted a bid for $2,566,344.87, which is higher than the engineer's estimate of $1.9 million. Staff evaluated the bids, and Active Construction, Inc. was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The bid included a total of six schedules. Each schedule is shown to the exact dollar amount to accurately portray the bid proposal. Anjali, did you want to go ahead and pull up the table on the screen for everyone to see?
Yeah. Mike's. So do you want to just scroll up? Mike will do it. It's creating a glitch when he switches to my screen here. It's Item Eight, and it's page 50 of the packet. Yeah, that's, I think you just passed it. Yeah, yeah, go, this is it. Yep, stop, yeah, right there. Go ahead, Shelby.
Okay, great. So Schedule A is for right-of-way improvements on 220th Avenue Southeast, which include construction of a new paved half-street. 221st Avenue Southeast improvements include the addition of three parallel parking stalls and a turnaround in the right-of-way. Schedule B is for park improvements, which is where a bulk of the work is being done. This includes an entry drive, parking lot, pedestrian circulation, utility improvements, fencing, landscaping, and irrigation. Schedule C is franchise utility coordination with Puget Sound Energy and Comcast. Schedule D would construct an accessible ramp to the treehouse and include the gate and electrical conduit for wiring. Schedule E extends electrical wiring to the treehouse and would allow the two gates to be locked remotely. Schedule S is for construction of two ramps with lighting, a deck, and stairs to the rear house. Please note that Washington State sales tax is only applicable for Schedule Bs through S. So I don't know that you can see it on your screen here, but I will go ahead and, Anjali, would you like me to read out the dollar amount since the screen isn't being shared?
So the screen is visible to those who are watching this from their homes, but go ahead and, yeah, the total bid amount, you can identify that.
Actually, I can't. Anjali, I can't see it from my screen, so I'm looking at the packet now, so you may have to refer where in the packet you're looking at.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's page 50 in the packet, and it's under Agenda Item Eight. So Shelby, go ahead and read out the amounts for those who may not be accessing this.
Sure. So Schedule A is $274,651.25. Schedule B for the park improvements is $1,654,948.75. Schedule C for the franchise utility connections is $4,400. Schedule D for treehouse improvements is $275,000. Schedule E for electrical upgrades to the treehouse is $14,000. Schedule S for the rear house ramp and deck is $135,000. The sales tax for Schedule Bs through S are $208,334.87, which brings the total bid amount to $2,566,334.87. As I mentioned, these are shown to the exact dollar amount to accurately portray the bid proposal. So staff acknowledged that the bids are higher than the engineer's estimate, but recommend that City Council award Schedules A through C at a minimum and authorize a construction contract for the following reasons. One, the property was transferred to the city in 2017 and has been closed to the public since that time. Without these improvements, the property is likely to remain closed to the public. Two, the city has committed to the Sammamish Heritage Society an in-kind grant match for utility improvements for the kitchen addition grant they recently received. This includes stub outs for water, septic, and electrical that are included in Schedule B. Three, the existing treehouse is currently only accessible via stairs. Although the city has an opportunity to provide universal access to this amenity, it is not required because the structure was built prior to property transfer. Due to cost, staff are recommending this schedule be deferred to a subsequent phase or omitted. Fourth, while providing ADA access to the rear house is a part of the Heritage Society's grant requirements, this schedule can be completed independently at a later date when the addition to the house is complete and outstanding reconstruction work is near completion. And lastly, reference checks for the low bidder, Active Construction, Inc., are very positive. It is unclear that rebidding the project at a later date will bring down the price and it will cause us to lose the construction window for this year. If a construction contract is awarded, construction will take approximately six months, with the contractor reaching substantial completion at the end of this year. As Anjali mentioned, staff presented the preliminary design and revised anticipated costs of $3.34 million in fall of 2018. At that time, City Council authorized a design contract for Phase One Improvements, but no additional funds were allocated for the construction of this project. So next, I'll walk you through the three tables that are identified on the financial impact section. So if you would move to the next page in the packet. Funding for this project is coming from three sources in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. Big Rock Park, B, Phase One Improvements, the Parks Capital Contingency Reserve, and the rear house ramp is council awards Schedule S. These three sources total $3.415 million. Additionally, there are sufficient funds in the ending fund balance from projects that will not begin in 2020. For example, a total of $1.675 million is available from the East Sammamish Park Playground and Parking Improvement Project, which has been placed on hold because of the Margaret Mead Elementary School rebuild. So first, I'll walk you through the total project costs if council elects to award all bid schedules. Construction costs for Schedules A through S, sales tax on Schedules Bs through S, a 10% construction contingency, and all soft costs, which include a contract for construction management services that is contingent on this bid award, bring the total cost to roughly $3.94 million. Funding for this option would pull from all three sources that I mentioned previously and would leave an outstanding balance of over half a million dollars. Now, on the other hand, if Schedules A through C are awarded under the project costs staff recommendation table, these schedules are enough to open the park to the public. Total projects for staff recommendation would be approximately $3.41 million. This option would exclude funding from the rear house ramp budget and would leave an outstanding balance of just over $165,000. Alternatively, City Council may choose to award a selection of alternate schedules from the ones we're showing here. So this is all the information that I have for the bid award. Based on Anjali's introduction, I can then proceed to the Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the construction management services. So let me just go ahead and do that. So the recommendation for the construction management services is for City Council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with KPG Interdisciplinary Design for Construction Management Services for $283,000 and authorize an additional $28,000 contingency, with the total authorization not to exceed $311,000 for additional services if needed. As I mentioned earlier, authorization of this contract is contingent on the bid award for Big Rock Park, Site B, Phase One Improvement. This contract is for construction management services for the Big Rock Park, Site B, Phase One Improvement Project. Under the construction management services contract, KPG Interdisciplinary Design will ensure that the improvements are constructed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications, and all required project documentation is accounted for. specifications, and all required project documentation is accounted for. KPG will provide project management, onsite observation, field inspections, material testing, special inspections for septic, structural, seismic, and welding, contract administration to organize and lead meetings, review pay applications, change management, quality assurance, and project closeout. The proposed construction management team will include an inspector onsite full-time during the anticipated 120-day project duration, in addition to part-time engineers in office to complete required project documentation, which includes the engineer record from the design phase. Again, total costs for this contract are $311,000. These costs are included in the total project costs for the previous agenda bill that I presented. And with that, I will open up to questions unless, Anjali, you had something else to add.
No, thank you, Shelby. That was great.
Okay, Council, there's lots of information. So, opening up for questions. Who would like to start? Okay, Deputy Mayor.
We're about to end you. I'm bouncing back and forth between go-to-meeting and our agenda. So, I have a question. Is the treehouse still usable without the electrical improvement?
Yes, this is Anjali. Yes, Deputy Mayor, it is usable. We just had the ability to lock the two gates from the ramp and then from the stairs remotely, and so we wouldn't have the ability to do that.
Okay. I'm just making sure I have all my questions that I'd highlighted in here. Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I... On the treehouse, I really would be interested in what the public input on that is. I look at it as a very special structure, and that to maintain it would be a cost to maintain it in its current condition, plus probably additional liability, insurance, et cetera. Would it be something where we want to be more proactive in preserving as a site and potentially rope it off and be more a... Have a story or a plaque on it of what its origin is and the special, more sentimental view? Because I worry about public, significant public going through it, and then we're going to be maintaining it, and it may not be able to restore it to its original condition with a lot of wear and tear. And it's not like replacing with a Fisher-Price playset. It's going to be difficult. So, I don't know the answer, but I do want to put that... I agree with the recommendation, defer that for now. But in deferring it, I would also want to get public input on whether we make it readily accessible or more a site to preserve.
So, we can definitely look at that in the course of the year, even while construction is going on. I will tell you that while this parcel has remained closed, we've had kids of all ages, teenagers, try and get in the park to get into the treehouse, and they find every which way they can. So, you know, we'll work offline with our operations staff as well and see how practical it will be. I think to open up the parcel and not let the kids enjoy the treehouse may be a bit of a challenge, but we're happy to look into it and report back.
Well, it's not the genesis of my question. I'm not drawing any conclusions. I want to know what the public sentiment on that is. If they want it open, then we'll respect that versus less cost to maintain and use it as a preserved structure, per se. That's really the choice. That's where I got... If you got any feedback on that, that's something I think Council would like to hear. I'm drawing no conclusions. I just asked a question.
Do you mean keeping it as perhaps like a historical type of structure versus...
Exactly. Yes. Exactly. Exactly. With perhaps a plaque with a story in front of it, so that people come in and view it, admire it, and get a little history on it. Just a thought. And what does the public think versus running with higher cost? But, you know, if that's the public sentiment, I can respect that as part of the decision-making.
Understood. We can definitely ask that question and solicit feedback from the public.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a question on... Well, a couple of them. One is to defer payment for the rear house ramp and deck. Now, does that do anything to any of the funding or anything that they're working out, or the grant monies or anything? Does that do anything to anything that the Historical Society is working on?
Not for the addition. Well, they do have to open the park up to the public, and they do have to make the museum space accessible. So, it will be needed before they open doors, but without them having constructed the addition, it's going to be hard. There's going to be no edge to build towards.
So, we want to make sure we earmarked it in the budget, but we just don't fund it right away.
Exactly.
Then I had a question on the franchise fees.
Yeah.
Because I don't understand paying ourselves franchise fees. So, what are the franchise fees for?
Let me try and answer that, and then Shelby... I'll turn it over to Shelby if she wants to add to it. But the franchise agreement covers some of the work in the right-of-way. It does not cover... This would be like we are applying for the Comcast connection and PSC work within the parcel, so we'd be like any other applicant. We'd have to pay the fees.
Okay, I have got Councilmember Gamblin, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Okay. So, bear with me one second. I'm working on three devices here. So, the... Here we go. The improvements for the treehouse, Schedule D, Treehouse Improvements 275, would those improvements make the treehouse universally accessible? Or are they not including that? And also on that same question, what would universally accessible look like when right now it's accessible by stairs? How would that become universally accessible?
Sure. So, what we have in Schedule B, which is the base bid improvements, regardless of, you know, if any of these other alternates are accept... Authorized, is there will be some improvements to the treehouse just to make sure it's safe for public use. So, we have some of the railing there that is not, you know, is a little larger. The openings are larger than they should be. So, there are some basic improvements in Schedule B that will get built. What the schedule that has the $274,000 attached to it is to make it universally accessible in that we will be constructing an ADA ramp. And what that looks like is there's going to be a curved ramp that has a set grade to it, no more than 1 and 12, that will be built all the way up to the treehouse. We do have a graphic in the packet.
Anjali, to the first level of the deck. So, the ramp's going to go to the first level of the treehouse, correct?
Right. The treehouse is all at one level.
Okay. Okay. And the 275, again, I'm not clear. Is that the improvements to the treehouse plus the universal accessibility together?
No, the improvements to the treehouse are in Schedule B, and they are just some, you know, tweaks to make sure there are no pinch points, and none of the railings have openings wider than four inches on center. So, there are some basic improvements in Schedule B, which is the improvements to the park. This schedule, I'm not... The $274,000 is for the ramp alone. So, if that is not approved, the ramp will not get built, and so you won't have universal access to the treehouse.
Okay. So, the ramp, the 274, is just to build the ADA, the universally accessible ramp? That's all that 274 is?
That's right. Schedule D, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. First of all, I just want to clarify. I think, unless I'm looking at the wrong numbers, I think Schedule D is $302,000. The 274 is the right-of-way, just to clarify for Councilmember Gamblin. But my question is, given the lease agreement that we just signed, wouldn't the ramp and deck for the rear house be the responsibility of the Historical Society at this point?
That is something that Council can discuss and decide how they would like to handle that improvement.
Because I thought the lease agreement said that they would be responsible for all of the improvements. Is that... Did I misread that?
That is correct. The lease agreement does say that the renovations to the house are the responsibility of the Heritage Society.
Okay.
I think they were planning on us following through on a promise we made in the past.
Well, but that was before they wanted this lease agreement. So, I think we just signed a lease agreement. Already, a lot of the improvements that we're making in terms of the utilities are for the rear house. If not for the rear house, we wouldn't need the electricity or the water and sewer, which are a big part of the costs here. So... Correct?
I think that if that wants to come back up for discussion when we get that far, then I think it'll be back up for discussion.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, I just canceled it. I'll deal with it when we're doing discussion on a motion.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah. So, not a question, obviously, but I will make a motion to approve Schedules Bs through Cs and Fs.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and then I can speak to my motion.
And... Okay. And Deputy Mayor, would you please speak to your motion?
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay. So, Bs through Cs obviously would help us to get the park open. That is staff's recommendation alone. I did add in Fs, which we were just talking about, which is the ramp and deck to the rear house. And while we may have just signed a lease agreement, that is going to be an asset to the park and to our residents. And so, as we just heard, the house can't open without it. So, I think it's something that we have to provide in order for that asset to be realized by the general public. The reason that I didn't go with Schedules Bs and Es partly is due to the cost of the project being much higher than we had realized, but also because I know, and not that these things will necessarily come to fruition in the future, but Rotary was scheduled to give the city a fairly sizable grant for those treehouse improvements on Schedule D. And for whatever reason, they were told that we weren't going to move forward with this project, and so they didn't ultimately approve that. So, my hope would be that maybe in the future Rotary would reconsider their grant, and their grant was going to be sizable. So, six figures, sizable. So, no... Again, no promise that those funds would materialize in the future, but it would certainly be nice to get a wonderful grant from Rotary for that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, we've got Councilmember Stewart, followed by Councilmember Trane.
Yeah. As opposed to a comment, I think I just will propose an amendment, and that is that we remove Schedule Fs. Again, I think that we need to discuss further. If we just signed a lease agreement, who should be paying for the deck and the ramp? And if we are going to pay for a deck and a ramp to open up the rear house, I think we should be paying for a ramp to open up the treehouse. When we took the tours of that, we were explained to what amazing opportunities it would be for school activities for elementary school students, and the fact that if, you know, it's about opening up these amenities to the public, then let's either do it or not do it. But I struggle with paying to open up the rear house to the public but not paying to open up the treehouse for all of our youth in the community. So, my amendment would be that we remove Schedule Fs.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to remove Schedule Fs, and I have a second discussion. I have two in the queue here, but I'm not sure what they were for. Deputy Mayor, was that for this?
It is now, yes, but I think Kent was first.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor?
Oh, no, I think Kent Trane's first.
Mine was... Mine's to the amendment, or to the motion, not the amendment.
Oh, okay. So, do I have anybody that wants to comment on the amendment?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I just thought Kent. So, obviously, that, you know, if we don't put in the ramp to the treehouse, it would preclude some, a portion of our population from being able to access it, but it doesn't prevent it from being open at all, whereas with the rear house, it does prevent it from being open. And so, that was kind of the differentiation for me. And it's not that we can't circle back and do it. We still can, especially if we can get grant money in order to do it. I think that would be a wise use of taxpayer funds if we can secure a grant. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, you had a question?
I think Councilmember Ross is in front of me.
Oh, Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, a question for clarification. With respect to the ramp to the rear house, as I read the agenda bill, it sounds like it's a requirement for the Heritage Society grant requirements, but is it, in fact, a requirement for access or opening it up?
To open up Big Rock Park?
Well, no. It... I read... I heard Deputy Mayor mention that it's required to open up, I guess, I don't know if she's referring to the park or the rear house itself.
The rear house.
I'm reading... Okay. The rear house. But it says that access is required for the grant requirement, but is it required for access in general, other than those who cannot access it, like the treehouse without a ramp?
Yes, that is my understanding of the grant, that it requires the rear house to be accessible, which is it would then need the ramp.
Oh, well, accessible to every population.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
So, my question is, why is a ramp required to open the rear house, but a ramp is not required to open the treehouse?
Can you repeat your question?
Sure. My question is, why is a ramp required to open the rear house, but a ramp is not required to open the treehouse? Deputy Mayor made that statement, and I'd like to get clarification that that is, in fact, true.
Right. So, the grant that the Heritage Society has pursued requires the rear house to be accessible. house to be accessible, so they would not be able to fulfill the obligations of the grant if it were not accessible, as in requiring a ramp and accessible for all populations, and it is also something, I think, which was laid out in the master plan for Big Rock Park, that the house would be open to the public, so any structure, a building that we open to the public does need to be accessible, in the case of the treehouse, because we got the site with the treehouse on it, the rules are a little different, it's not, you know, it doesn't have the same rules as buildings that are required to be accessible. If we were building a treehouse today, we might have come under different rules, but since we got the parcel with the treehouse, we have some flexibility, if that makes sense.
Then I have a follow-on question for the city attorney, since we just signed a lease agreement stating that any improvements to the reared house would be the responsibility of the Heritage Society, doesn't this kind of violate that right off the bat, that we're going to pay for this?
Section 5D, excuse me, of the lease, says the renovations are the Historical Society's responsibility, except as otherwise agreed by the city in writing, so it is subject to negotiation, but until that negotiation's complete, it's the Society's obligation, yes.
So, I just, I just don't see why we need to be paying for this, I think that is not our responsibility at this point in time, and just to, you know, reiterate what was discussed earlier, is that if we're concerned about our financial future, then we should be making more prudent decisions here. And have further negotiations with the Heritage Society, now that we have a lease in place.
Do I have any other comments on the amendment, proposed amendment? Okay, well, I'm going to comment on the proposed amendment, this was an obligation that I believe that I heard a year, if not two years ago, that was made by the city to the historical group, and so, I look at it, an obligation, and, and it is something that we owe, that we promised them, and to back off on it now, I think that was part of the negotiations going in, when they, they were negotiating this lease, it would be wrong to not fulfill that obligation, that's my opinion. Okay, so, that being said, there is the motion on the floor, and a second for removal of Schedule F, and I'm going to go down the list, Deputy Mayor?
Nay.
Councilmember Gamblin? Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Nay.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Trine?
Nay.
And myself, I'm a nay. That's 5-2, going back to the original motion. Kristi, will you state the original motion on the floor?
Absolutely, it was to approve Schedules A through C and F.
And we had a first and a second, is there any more discussion? Calling for the vote, Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Oops, hold on, we've got a, we have a question.
So, this is Anjali again, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, there's probably two authorizations we need for this agenda bill, one would be to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Active Construction, Inc., for the Phase 1 improvements for Schedules A, B, C, and F, plus administer a 10% construction contingency, and then to also authorize total project costs, in this case, they would go up, if we are including F, and my just rough calculation is not to exceed 3.7 million, again, we'll only be charging the project the actual costs, that would just give us the authorization to be able to proceed.
You can reframe my motion to what Anjali just said.
And does the person who seconded it?
Hold on, I'm, I'm looking at the, the 3 point, Anjali, what's the number again, 3.7?
Essentially removed the 300,000 or so that's associated with the treehouse, it may be a little higher than we need, Shelby, feel free to speak up if I've done my math wrong here. I think.
I'm trying to add right now.
Yeah, 300,000. Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have our first and our second, oh, and we have a question, so, Councilmember Ritchie?
Yeah, sorry guys, not to throw a wrinkle into, I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on here.
Yeah.
By excluding D and E from the motion, and if I heard Deputy Mayor Malchow correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the assumption here is that if we don't get a grant from the Rotary, then we would come back and include that into a proposal later on, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, do this later.
So, I guess my concern would be, I'd kind of, well, I feel like we should include that language and put a date certain on it, because if we get down the process and we move on, and it's ready to open, and budgets and things like that, so I just, I like to offer an amendment that we, you know, we put something in there saying that by X date, whatever we agree upon, that if that, we don't receive the funding from, that's news to me, Deputy Mayor Malchow, that's great news, I didn't know that they were talking about doing that, so, I mean, obviously, a grant's going to be better than not getting a grant, I mean, if we can include that in the process, great, I just want to make sure that there is accessible, some ramp is built there, up to code, and if we can't get the funding from the Rotarians, then we need to do it ourselves, by X date, and I don't know what that is, but I just would like to make sure that we put that language in here, so that we are obligated to go back and revisit it.
I'll second that. Yeah, I'll second that, if we could possibly clarify, clarify it a bit, which is, why not just include Schedules D and E with a clause in there stating that we will seek a grant from the Rotary to assist in the funding of that?
Because if you put it in, then it's there, and we'll have to do it.
Yeah.
So, if you put it in, then we have to do it, this is allowing us not to have to do the treehouse, which, if you think about when you were a child and you walked up to a treehouse, the reality is, the experience is going up in the ladder, I have friends who are handicapped, crutches, I've had kids who are blind, and when we got to a treehouse, when I was a kid growing up, everyone got up in the treehouse, that was part of the adventure, so, if you haven't been out to that treehouse, there's very few people in the city of Samamish who would not have access to this treehouse, as it sits today.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that Councilmember Trine had the floor, and I just, I just want, well, I'm just, I'm sorry, it's, I have the floor, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor made a comment that, you know, we wanted to seek the funds, and I agree with Councilmember Ritchie, that's great news, I think that to be non-inclusive, to not include the ramp to the treehouse, is not keeping within the spirit of who we are as a city, we are an inclusive city, and so, I, it sounded to me like the Deputy Mayor's intent was that we would do this, we just wanted to get that grant, and so I think we can include that language in there.
Mayor, may I speak to my motion, please?
Amendment.
So, are you putting an amendment out, because that's what we were just wondering here, so, if so, yes.
Well, that's, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what's going to pass, and I'm trying to figure out if, what's going on here, it's Councilmember Stewart is saying we should leave the money in, and if I heard Councilmember Trine, Ken, please correct me if I'm wrong, that you're saying if we put the money in, we will probably not get the funding from the Rotarians, I don't know what's right, what's wrong, I, all I want to do, A, is make sure it's built, and I would prefer to have the funding come from a charitable source like the Rotarians, if possible, my goal here is to make sure it is built, before it's opened, period, full stop, so my motion is, that we, my amendment to the motion is, that we put in a date certain, that we know where the funding will come from, whether from our taxpayer dollars or from the Rotarians, and my offer is that that is no later than December 1st of 2020.
I'll second that.
What I'd like to clarify is that we wouldn't be able to award the contract to the contractor with any uncertainty, we'll have to decide what schedules we award the contractor, and then that needs to be separate from the project authorization, you can authorize project costs not to exceed the 3.93 or 9.4 million we have, you know, possibly to, say project costs not to exceed 4 million, and then authorize the city manager tonight to only award the schedules that we are certain we can build, because tomorrow we'll have to start working on the paperwork with the contractor, and we can't have any uncertainty in what schedules we are awarding.
Then I would ask when we would know from the Rotarians what they're going to do, and then I would suggest that we table this until we know where our funding sources are.
I.
Because that's a huge amount of money.
Yeah, I received a call from, from the Rotary saying that they had decided not to fund the project, so I would have to reach back and see if, you know, that tonight's decision changes anything for them.
Okay, now I have backup in the queue here, so I've got, do we have a motion on the floor, or do we not have a motion on the floor, if we do, could you please repeat it?
Jason, I think you made a motion.
So, he has an amendment?
No, I made, I made an amendment, and at this point, I don't think that the amendment, I mean, I don't know that, I will withdraw my amendment, I, I think we should table this, that's my offer right now, because we don't have all the information, we can't open the, the site without having a ramp there, and if there's a possibility that can be funded by the Rotarians, Anjali is saying that they're going to withdraw their, their request, or they're not doing it now, and Deputy Mayor Malchow says maybe they will, but maybe we should just stop for a second, figure it out, because that's, and that's a lot of money, just to like, say, oh, it's just, we need to kind of nail this down before we actually put money into it, I agree with Councilmember Trine 100% that we cannot have this open unless there is an accessible way for every citizen of Samamish to be able to get to it, I just am not entirely sure how we're going to fund this thing, I mean, everything else I agree upon, I mean, just to be clear, this section, I don't think we're ready to move forward with the contract, or we just cut the Rotarians out and we move on, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm withdrawing my motion, I'm just putting my, my position out there, because I don't think we're there yet, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go through, because maybe we'll have some answers in going through this queue here, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Gamblin, and then Deputy Mayor.
Well, I was going to speak to the amendment that I didn't understand, but the amendment's withdrawn, so I guess, in the absence of any other amendments, we'll get our answer on what people think on the vote, so we'll leave it for the vote on Deputy Mayor Malchow's motion.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, so, we have no guarantees about Rotary, but I got a call from Rotary on this grant specifically, and they opted not to do it, because they heard that we weren't going to fund this project at all, I don't know where the information came from, but, obviously, you know, I think there's intent from this council this evening to hopefully move this thing forward, I don't think, I don't want to table this, Mary Piggott gave us this huge gift, and I want to see it realized, and I think a lot of other people do too, there is nothing preventing this council from revisiting this decision and instituting accessibility for all, I don't think anybody in this council wants to deny access to the amazing gift of that treehouse that exists there, but I also think that we have the opportunity, potentially, I don't know that Rotary will or won't come back with funds for this, they may not, and we may have to do that, but I don't think we can put a date certain on it either, because we have no control, we don't know what Rotary will do or not do, or when they do their grant, so, my preference would be, obviously, the motion that is currently on the floor, is to move this project forward, and then revisit, as we need to, on the ramp, we can always go back, I don't think, maybe you can answer the question, but I don't think there's anything preventing us from moving this project forward tonight, and then revisiting this in a month, or two months, or six months, or whenever it is, on the ramp.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so my proposed amendment is what I think Anjali had recommended, which is that we amend the main motion to just raise the not-to-exceed amount to include Schedules D and E, but that the contract as executed will not include D and E, so that we can come back and very easily add those back in, at, you know, in a month or two months, as the Deputy Mayor suggested. So my, my amendment is that we amend the not-to-exceed amount to include the extra, whatever it's going to be, 350,000 when you put the contingency in, or whatever that is, so whatever the original amount was, and Anjali, if you could help us out with those dollar figures.
So, if we, if I understand correctly, you're asking for a dollar amount that would enable us to build all schedules, and that would be just shy of 4 million?
Right, but that, then when we actually execute the contract, it would only be to include whatever the council agrees upon, which sounds like they would exclude, for the moment, D and E.
Right, so, if, as long as you authorize the city manager certain schedules, and say plus administer a 10% contingency, we'll do the math and only make that amount available, and then the total project cost is a separate authorization, and that can be 4 million.
Okay, Council, it's 10 o'clock, and so we're going to have to extend this meeting.
Move we extend till 10:30.
To 10:30, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Okay.
I'd like to second Councilmember Stewart's motion, or amendment, please.
Okay, we have a first and a second to the amendment. Do we have any, okay, so we have got, we have got a question here from, my brain's, from the interim city manager, okay, we're going to, let the interim city manager ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, indulge me for a moment, Anjali, would you identify where the funding is coming from for this higher amount?
Right, so, the parks, CIP, has funds from other projects that are not being built this year, and that's where the funding would come from, but right now, the identified sources are the available 2.2 million allocated to this project, as well as 1.065 million, which are available in the capital contingency reserve, and then any amount above that, the about half a million in this case, is because we have of ending fund balance that will allow for that to be spent, because there are other projects that we aren't constructing this year.
And what would those projects be, I just want the council to be aware of other things that are not going to happen.
Right, so, we've had the improvements to East Samamish Park, to the playground and the parking, and then we had that actually for the last couple of years, and then when the Margaret Mead reconstruction, rebuild came about, we put a pause on this project for East Samamish Park, because of two reasons, mainly because we couldn't have two construction projects go side by side, and then now there is access to, you know, good play equipment at Margaret Mead, not necessarily at the park, but that's when we hit a pause button on that, and then we also have the Beaver Lake Park Lakeside improvements that haven't happened, and one of the things that actually happened right before council authorized the adoption of the pro plan, is that two projects got added to the list, one was Big Rock Park Site B improvements, as well as the Klahani Master Plan, and they were added just before the pro plan was authorized, and no other projects came off the list, so that's why we have a couple other projects that we haven't been able to get to with the same staff resources that we've had.
All right, thank you for that, thank you for that clarification, I just didn't want, expect. I just didn't want expectations to still be lingering out there. Thank you.
Right.
Okay, so we have a amendment on the floor. Andy, first, and a second. Pam, did you speak to your motion?
Yeah, well, really quickly, I just think that it, it kind of covers all the bases. So it allows us to move forward, it allows us to have this higher amount allocated, and we can come back and revisit it in a month or two, as the Deputy Mayor suggested, once we get clarification from the Rotary.
Do we have any questions? I guess I do. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I didn't say a month or two, just for clarification. The Rotary is not going to make a decision in one or two months, just to be perfectly clear. I don't know when they're gonna make a decision, but I don't think that, they were trying to make it this year. They may only do this on an, on an annual basis. So I do not expect one to two months. Please don't say that. The, the, I do have a question, however. And while I, I don't disagree with Councilmember Stewart in attempting to add the funds, I think it's kind of six to one, half does in the other here, relative to the motion on the floor. Because it'll still require council action to come back and add in D and E, which means at that time, we can simply add in the additional funds then. Is that an accurate statement, or not?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
I just, I think it's important to include that in there, if we're gonna go back to the Rotary, and attempt to get that grant, to show them that we have the intent. And I think that making the vote with the higher amount shows that intent.
Okay, is there any other comments? Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote on the amendment, which is on the floor. And the amendment on the floor is to add the additional amount of D and E to the-
Just to the do-not-exceed. It's just to the do-not-exceed number.
Correct.
Can we get-
To the, to the original motion. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we get the dollar before we go?
Going in order, Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, can we get the dollar amount, please, first? Not exceed, but-
So the total is 3.936 million, so you can make it for 3.94 million, round it up to 3.94 million.
That would take-
Versus the 3.4-
Correct. 3.9-
4 million.
3.94 million. Okay, going for the vote, Deputy Mayor.
Nay.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Nay.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross. Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Trean.
Nay.
And I'm gonna be a nay, only because I'm afraid if we put the money there, we won't get money.
That's correct.
Okay, so that leads us back to the motion. And the motion-
Call for the-
Pardon?
Call for the question. Vote on it.
Councilmember Trean, when you call for the question, we're technically supposed to take a vote on calling for the question.
So just-
It's actually easier to just let the vote happen.
Yeah. So, I'm going to call the vote on the motion on the floor. And I'm going to ask Kristi to please repeat her motion for the record.
Yes, it was what Angelie said so eloquently, relative to not-to-exceed dollar amount, which I believe is 3.431, but there was some contingency funds in there as well. But it was to approve Schedules A through C and F.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go through the lineup, gonna go backwards this time. Councilmember Trean.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember Malchow. And I am an aye. So that would be 7-0. Can you keep a note or something to come back, you know, maybe six months, and so, just so it gets back to us, so we check back in, and make sure that, we check it back in on that treehouse, and see where we're at with it, and it doesn't slip through the cracks? Thank you.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is the School Resource Officer for Inglewood Middle School.
We have one more motion.
Oh, we have one more.
So I want to clarify that council just authorized Schedules A, B, C, and F, and administering a 10% contingency, which takes the total project cost to 3.7 million. And the other Agenda Item 9 was, as part of this, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with KPG Interdisciplinary Design for Construction Management Services for 283,000, and authorize an additional 28,000 contingency for the total authorization not to exceed 311,000 for additional services if needed. And to clarify, this amount of 311 is already now approved as part of the increased project costs of 3.7 million.
I move we do that.
I like that wording.
Second.
You're getting punchy. All right. So we gotta move to do that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor, any discussion? Okay. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to do that, and we've got a second. And I'm not seeing anything come up here for discussion. So I'm going to call for the vote, and I'm going to go, Councilmember Trean.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
And aye. Okay, now-
Yeah. Thank you, Council. I know that was a lot of information and a lot of numbers to throw at you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for all your time you've spent on that. Okay, so next, I believe we do have the School Resource Officer for Inglewood. And Mr. Sugg is going to speak to it along with our chief.
Chief, you can just take any, any seat with the mic up there.
And we have Chief Pingray in the house. All right. Okay, Mr. Sugg's gonna start us off.
Yes, I will take the introduction here. So this is a discussion regarding whether or not the council is interested in adding a School Resource Officer at Inglewood Middle School in partnership with the Lake Washington School District. So as a brief background here, it's on the Agenda Bill. The city has had an SRO program at both public high schools in Sammamish since 2006, and this is accomplished through interlocal agreements with the respective school districts. More recently, the Lake Washington School District has budgeted their portion of the costs to place an SRO at all of their middle schools and high schools within the district. And Inglewood Middle School is one of the two schools in their district without an SRO at this time. So the costs of adding such a position are detailed in the Financial Impact section of your Agenda Bill tonight. But basically, the fully loaded cost of a School Resource Officer is approximately 207,000. This not only includes salary and benefits, but also other associated costs like overtime, equipment, vehicle, support staff, et cetera. And if we were to follow the same cost-sharing methodology that's in our current interlocal agreement with the Lake Washington School District, that would require that the district pay about 50% of the costs for an SRO for 10 out of 12 months, and the city pays 100% of the costs for the remaining two. And this is the same cost-sharing methodology that's in the interlocal agreement with the Issaquah School District. So that calculation works out, of the $207,000 fully loaded cost, the Lake Washington School District would be responsible for about 86,000, and the city would be responsible for the remaining 121,000 or so. So Chief Pingray, as the mayor mentioned, has, is here tonight, and he has provided more information on this proposed position as part of Exhibit 1 in your packet tonight. So tonight, staff are looking for the council's direction on whether this is something they would like to move forward with and consider at a future council meeting. If it is desired, at this point, the interim city manager can work with the district to revise the existing ILA, so that we can include the SRO for Inglewood Middle School as part of the agreement, in addition to the existing SRO at Eastlake High School. And this revised ILA, once staff have had a chance to work on it, would come back at a future council meeting for approval. So the council's not approving tonight the final permanent addition of this position. It's just more of a direction to kind of move forward, and explore that with the district, and come back at a future meeting to approve it. So I'm looking at Chief Pingray. I'm wondering if he has anything additional to add to what I mentioned.
Bit, just a little bit. Madam Mayor, council members, City Manager Rudat, thanks for having me here tonight. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to look at the packet, so I know it's late, and hopefully it's self-explanatory, but I'll answer any questions, just to keep this moving. One clarification, though, is the budget impact for this year would only be approximately $58,000. The rest of the, because the school year falls in the middle of our budget year, or it splits it. So we would only be, the, the financial impact this year would be approximately $58,000. The rest would be added in the next biennial, when we'd be looking at adjusting, or preparing We, we do have a candidate that is very interested, actually came in last year when these dollars became available, and we were notified by the school district. He has already had a chance to meet with the principals and staff, and they were very impressed, and he, he was impressed as well. It was, seemed like it would be a great fit. He is looking at, since it has been a while, he's looking at some other opportunities within the sheriff's office, but did give us a heads up. And so hoping to find out if we can move forward with this, so we can prepare for the next school year in September. So it's always about fit, and this was a good fit and an opportunity.
Okay, we do have some questions. And let's start with Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Gamblin.
It's, it's relative to the, the ILA. I'm curious, excuse me, if we know what the ILAs look like for other jurisdictions, if they're very similar in nature? Do we know that?
Each jurisdiction would have their own wording. Obviously, legal counsel would be involved, and that's always a piece for negotiation at all levels. They are similar in the ones that I have seen in the past. And, and this is very similar to the one that Issaquah School District uses.
Okay. I mean, the, the reason I'm asking is, is in part based on, and we don't have what was on the, the ballot for people to vote on, but they may have made an assumption that by voting for this, that they would be getting an SRO regardless of what a municipality decided to or not to, to do. And it's clear by our own ILA in Article 5, where it spells out the rate at which we split. So it's 50% of the King County rate for an SRO times 10, divided by 12, to reflect the number of, of months in the school session. I was just curious if that's similar to other jurisdictions, or if we're an anomaly. I guess I'm, I'm interested in their language, as it pertains to voters in multiple municipalities passing this levy to supply the SRO.
Right. So early on, in fact, the cities and/or the county usually paid for all of the position. And as, this has become a much more, I don't know if viable's the right word, but it's a, it's a much more palatable to the schools, and they appreciate the security and the relationships that are built by the School Resource Officers. So as a result, most of them, most of them have provided funding that is similar in nature. But again, those are individual negotiations in regards to that. But with the majority of partner cities that I'm aware of, it's a very similar costing model.
Okay. I would be interested, Mr. Interim City Manager, for understanding what the other municipalities within the confines of our school districts, that being, I know we have three, but really, we would only be providing an SRO for two of the three. If our language in our ILA matches that of other jurisdictions, and I ask that, not because I don't support putting an SRO in our schools, but because of the funding and how it is done through a ballot measure, where if, for example, Redmond, let's just say, the Lake Washington School District pays a higher percentage of the SRO in their jurisdictions, that means, you know, the collective taxpayer dollars are more heavily funding an SRO in one municipality over another, thereby rendering our taxpayers on the hook for, to make up the gap. And that's why I'm interested in what the other municipalities' ILAs say.
And we will do that, then. And we'll report back to the council.
Thanks. That was my only question.
That was your only question, and you had another one?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Pingray, for being available at 10:21 at night to talk about this. Appreciate it. Couple of quick questions. Lake Washington School District, if we're good with this, are they, I assume they're good with this, and they're, that's, that's already approved?
Yes, and in fact, before, I put this before the city manager, I checked with Scott Emery, who is in charge of this for the Lake Washington School District. And he stated that they do support trying to fill this position, along with the Tesla School in unincorporated King County.
Okay. And just a second question. So we mentioned here that this amount includes some other fixed costs that don't, don't sound to me like not, they sound like non-recurring costs. If this is then projected out into future years to have this SRO available at the school, would we expect to see the same amount, or would it be a lesser amount in years going forward?
Right, right. No, those, those costs are ongoing and continue to move forward on an annual basis. The reason for that, and there's all kinds of models for how it works, but those fixed costs, for example, for vehicles, et cetera, include risk management, replacement of the vehicle, maintenance of the vehicle, et cetera. So that if a vehicle, and in this case, if it was a School Resource Officer vehicle, got damaged or totaled in the parking lot, they would have a new vehicle immediately ready for them. So it's all part of a, it's not the complete cost, but it's based on a monthly, a monthly amount that's amortized over years.
Okay. So this would be about the amount we'd be talking about going forward into the future also?
Correct. The only difference would be colicosts for the officer themselves, based on-
Gotcha.
-agreements.
Gotcha. Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
It works better when I take it off of mute. I'm sorry. I move that we approve the funding for an SRO at Inglewood Middle School for the upcoming school year. Or for that, whatever the portion of the school year that we need to do ahead of the next budget cycle.
Do I hear a second for that?
Second.
Discussion?
In speaking to my motion, I'm more than happy to support this. I attempted to get this funded at the mid-buy because I know how important it is at Inglewood, especially middle schools, I think, benefit greatly by having a dedicated SRO. And I think trying to split an SRO between Inglewood and Eastlake is just too much for any one person. And I would agree that those relationships that they build really help to prevent a lot of issues and are highly valued. So thanks, Chief, for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay, plus somebody who works on the schools a lot, I agree, I think they need to be there.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I have a question. Councilmember Trine?
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, just out loud, that, like, I'd like to give direction. I didn't, I didn't see this as an action item coming to us tonight to actually take action and make a motion. So I wonder if the city manager, are you guys ready for us to take action here or is this something you were just looking for direction for?
Mayor, members of council, we, we teed it up to get direction and then come back with where we were going to find the money. But if you want to direct that included in the motion, then I'll go do it and still report back to you. But the biggest issue was to find the support or lack of thereof from the council. Clearly, the council is supportive so that the chief could approach his officer and make the commitment. And then I would go work with finance as to designating where those funds might come from because this is adding another position to the city's budget so that there is an augmentation. So if I think this through, as I'm thinking out loud, we need to bring it back for the council to amend the budget.
Okay, so you don't need anything tonight. You just need to come back and have a say. Show me the money.
Right, because, I mean, David, I, the reality is, is, hi, I've worked with at-risk
kids. I've worked for over seven years with SROs, with Bellevue Police Department, within high schools and middle schools. I understand the value of the SRO and getting the right guy is the key. So I am totally all for getting an SRO on board, but I just, I just was looking at the agenda item and it wasn't an action item, it was just to, to give you direction. So if you, yeah, that's all I got to say for right now.
I'd say my motion still stands, though. There's no reason why we can't amend the budget right now and just be done with it and move on.
Okay, the motion's on the table to amend the budget. Okay, and what was our second?
That was Jason.
Jason, okay. So do you want to?
That was Ken.
Ken, sorry.
It was, okay. So do you want to keep the motion with the second and have it for amending the budget?
Sure.
Yeah, let's just get it done, right?
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Oops, hang on, we got one here. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, it feels like we're chunking through the budget process, piece by piece. And we're, we in the near term have the biannual budget. The question I have for Chief is, is when is this going to be implemented and how's that fall in with the biannual budget timing?
So this, so this is a budget amendment for this year as part of the, or as part of the 2019-2020 budget.
Right, right.
So this is approximately?
58K amount.
Right. And it's approximately $59,000 for the remainder of this year.
Okay, okay. So it has to be an amendment for this year's budget, not the biannual budget.
Correct.
That'd be dealing with the, continuing it in the next, next period.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, I'm going to call this vote because then we need to extend our meeting.
Karen, I have a question, though.
Okay, so quickly, we're going to call the vote.
Karen, I have a question.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Chief, quick question because you said we have 59,000, it would be 59,000 for this year. Is there anything imminent about needing this higher right now? Because really, we would only need it for the last four months of this year because we know school's not going to be in session.
Then you know more, I don't know that the school's not going to be in session. I know that that's still being?
They've canceled school already through the end of this school year, so they would presumably start up in September.
Right, that's the 59,000. The 59, no, that's what I'm saying, yeah. The $59,000 will be for September through December.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? Quickly calling the vote, Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that would be across the, yep. Okay, we need to extend the meeting.
I move we extend till 11:00 PM.
Do I hear a second?
Do we have to cover this last, do we have to cover this last item tonight? Is it time sensitive?
Oh, I'm just being told yes. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so extending to 11. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. The next thing up is the lease agreement for the King County Sheriff's Office. Who's going to take that? Anjali, okay.
All right, this is Anjali and I'm going to introduce this topic. It is to authorize the city manager to sign a notice of intent to terminate the lease agreement between the City of Sammamish and the King County Sheriff's Office. The King County Sheriff's Office currently leases a portion of the second floor at City Hall from the City of Sammamish, which includes about 5,200 square feet of office space and secured parking for up to 36 vehicles. The lease is dated April 26, 2011 with an initial 10-year term which expires on April 25, 2021. Section 3.3A of the lease provides that notwithstanding the county's right to extend the term of the lease, the city retains the right to terminate the lease at the conclusion of the initial 10-year term, subject to providing the county no less than 12 months of a prior written notice of the city's intent to terminate. The city wishes to exercise its right to terminate the lease by providing a 12-month notice in order to provide the needed workspace and parking for employees. Renovations to City Hall over the past year were made to offer short-term solutions to constrained workspaces, but in order to effectively meet our future needs, the city will require expanded workspace for its employees. The city has valued the partnership between the city and the county's sheriff's office over the past years and recognizes the benefits of having Sammamish police and the King County Sheriff's Office in close proximity at City Hall. Staff will be utilizing the next few months to compile information on the city's needs for additional space now and in the future, the cost for renovation and other analysis to weigh this decision against the loss of rent, access to the county, King County Sheriff's Office resources, and other benefits of the current lease agreement. It's possible that the city may be able to amend the lease to allow the King County Sheriff's Office to use part of the space and turn over the rest to the city. The city manager needs time to review this information, but recommends that we give the notice in conformance with the terms of the contract. The financial impact is that we have an annual, annual revenue related to this lease for 2020 in the amount of 145,000. So that is the approximate amount that we get in rent. And terminating this lease would remove this amount of revenue. And then the other alternates for council is to choose not to terminate the lease and then, you know, we'd at some point run out of space for our employees here and space for parking as well. And then we'd possibly have to look for space outside of City Hall. That is all I have.
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to, did you?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Okay.
Mayor and council, the, when I got here, or just maybe a month ago, three weeks ago now, the staff has approached me with the terms of this lease and the space study that was done in 2017, I think it is. And I do need time to look at it, but I thought it most prudent to go ahead and ask you to approve giving notice so that if there was a holdover and if we wanted to move forward, we were able to ask the higher lease amount on the rent. I have personally called the sheriff, had a nice conversation with her about what we were forced to do or looking to do on the lease. She told me that she has the same terms, that she needs to reevaluate their space needs and what their alternatives are. It was a very friendly and amicable dialogue and I think that there is a lot of value to the precinct being here. The chief and I have talked about it. He's tried to bring me up to speed, but a reallocation of space and a reevaluation of our space needs is certainly the most prudent thing that we should do. And I think that will be a positive outcome for all parties involved. But it's the prudent thing to do. I recommend that we, you support this so that notice can be given and we can properly move towards evaluating our space needs. Let the sheriff formally evaluate what she thinks their needs are for the sheriff's department from a precinct standpoint and see what we can work out.
Okay, I see we have lots of questions. So I believe we start, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, I believe we start with Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief and interim. Just got a question, and this goes back a little bit when we were looking at, before I was a council member, when we were looking at staffing, police staffing in the city. And one of the, one of the things we were looking at would, was that although per population wise, we may have been a little bit low in our per capita officer, street patrol presence that because we had the sheriff's office here, we were, kind of had some backup and assurance that we had readily available more officers and more backup available close by and quickly. And I would just like to put out there, the question is, how would losing the sheriff's office within the city affect that? And would it cause us to have to hire one, two, three, four, whatever, have many more officers at a much higher price point than the amount of the lease? So just a thought on this and I'd maybe get some input or thought going on that.
Excellent question. That was mine.
I think it's a very good question. I can give you my initial thoughts on that and then Chief Pingray is here for more specific questions. He and I have talked briefly about it. There's certainly the synergy that you get from having the precinct here for his, for the other police officers. There's the shared detectives that he can talk to more particularly, but you also have just the presence of the precinct being here from officers coming and going. Anybody observing anything like that will be real pleased and there is the perception that we have a lot more officers in the field than what we really do. But as to the specifics, that's one of the things that I would take on working with Chief Pingray, is analyzing what benefit he gets with those precincts being here, what shared time is available between detectives and/or other specialty units. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Pingray.
Thank you. So that was fairly succinctly put and correct. We are looking at not only high visibility, but those officers are also, although not dedicated, available to support all of the Sammamish dedicated troops. And that happens on an ongoing and regular basis, including the fact that perhaps if we're at a three minimum on graveyard and they're all busy and we have another serious incident or even just a basic call for service, King County Sheriff's deputies will respond and can help us manage those calls as well. One piece that I'm, that is a big part of this contract is the shared supervision. And having those shared supervisors on duty at the beginning of shift and at the end of shift here at the station so that they can have direct interaction with our troops is very important because supervision and/or lack of supervision is one of the biggest risk factors for law enforcement. And that would be a significant impact if they were to be gone. So those are that, along with, you know, working with the detectives and detectives having interaction because the bad guys are, it's improper, but subjects who commit crime and move back and forth between jurisdictions. And as a result, having the detectives here together, they can work well together and it helps us solve those crimes.
Right. In addition, the quantitative amount of additional cost is yet to be determined, but what, with what the chief has said and what I've perceived is that not only would you have the loss in revenue from leased space, but you would have the additional cost of the officers that he wouldn't have the benefit of sharing. But we need to determine what that is. Is that 200,000? Is it a half a million dollars? I don't know.
Okay, don't go away. All right. Next question is from Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, am I still? My question, Dave, is you, you said it was prudent for us to go ahead and initiate this termination when we haven't done all of this analysis. And I guess I need to understand a little bit more why we would initiate the termination of the lease when it feels like we have a lot more questions. And one, I want to say that I appreciate that we have some space challenges at City Hall. I'm wondering, though, if those will be less acute in the near future, given the fact that we are likely to be in some sort of a recession for some period of time here. So the urgency may be a little bit less acute. And I feel like we have a lot of questions like, where will the King County Sheriff's Office go? And while that may not be exactly our problem, it feels like it's something we ought to make sure they have a place to go. And then the very specific questions about the impacts it will have on our, you know, our officers and our, and the officer sharing and those costs. So can you help me understand why it's prudent to initiate this termination before we have those questions answered?
And our legal counsel is on the line, but we've got a lease that says that if And our legal counsel is on the line, but we've got a lease that says that if there is a holdover, if we don't initiate this termination notice as the lease calls for within 12 months, and say we wait and we do our study and it's eight months down the road, and then we say, wow, we need a lot more space, and we exercise it then, and there is a holdover, then we're just limited to the current rate amount that we would be getting and not an increase that's allowed for in the lease. By the same token, the sheriff has this opportunity that she can provide us with 12 months' notice and exercise that as they begin to do their due diligence. I don't know what's on her plate. I know I have plenty on my plate. Would I choose to do this at this time? No, not necessarily if this lease was going to go on for a while, but it's not. And I just think that it's just one more thing that we need to do. You give the notice. If you're able to work things out, great. If not, you just put your nose to the grindstone, you do the due diligence that you need to do.
So if I can, to make sure I understand what you're saying. So what you're saying is that by giving the 12-month notification now, we collectively, meaning the city of Sammamish and possibly King County Sheriff's Office, may not actually have the time to complete all of the analysis that's needed, given everything else that's going on. But it doesn't prevent us from amending or entering into a new lease if all of those details aren't worked out. But if we don't terminate this lease and the lease will just continue, we don't get to charge them more money. And that's really what the advantage of giving the notice now means, that even if we do want to extend it, we can charge them more.
That's the way I sum it up.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood, because I was kind of confused, because it doesn't feel like we're all going to be ready to have a new situation in 12 months from now. It just feels like there are so many questions outstanding and in a time when things are more unpredictable than ever, that it doesn't feel like we're going to get all those answers in the next 12 months. But I see why you're suggesting that we do it so that even if we do extend, we'll make more money in rent.
Well, in part that. The other part of it is, we can procrastinate ourselves right through the whole next 12 months, and it's so easy to do with all of the priorities we have. I just see it's there in the lease, you know, to use the term, you just got to call the ball and go and do what we need to do and try and get it done. I have a more positive and, whether it's, I'm not trying to compare positive versus negative, I'm just saying it's there. So it's a goal we need to try to accomplish. Can we get everything done, like agreeing to a new lease and getting all the tenant improvements done? I don't know what those look like, but I think we need to make the effort and move forward now rather than waiting three or four months from now. And things may be worse. They could be better. I don't know. I can't see that far ahead, but I can see that we need to start this.
Great. And then one last question, and then I'll let others ask. But so let's assume that we execute this notification and you guys get to work on it, and you're doing great work. King County Sheriff's Office may need to find a new city to be headquartered out of. Where do we see our Sammamish officers being housed, you know, irrespective of where King County Sheriff's Office ends up? I mean, they would still be housed inside the city, correct?
That's correct. They wouldn't go anywhere.
Chief, do you want to weigh in on that?
Okay, so we still have to find, so we still have to find space for them somewhere?
No, let me be clear. We're talking about the precinct that is upstairs.
Upstairs.
Versus the police department, which is occupied where they are right now. And the vision that others have had, that I may or may not share, I don't know enough yet, is that, for example, finance, parks and rec might switch to the other side where the precinct is now. And where the precinct is now shifts to working over the existing police department. And that may be more productive for the police department as well as the precinct, for example.
So we're terminating this lease, but we're not saying that we're kicking them out?
Correct.
We're just saying that we're going to possibly rearrange some deck chairs here?
Correct.
Okay.
Chief, do you want to weigh in on this?
Thank you.
I can just clarify a little bit, and so that is the point. And I, Dave and I have spoken about the contract and the term, the lease agreement and the terms in that. And the sheriff, when she was here before as a precinct major, was aware of these discussions and of options. And we've had those discussions. And I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but she is aware of that, and I know that Dave had those conversations as well. And so this won't be coming in as something completely new, and there are potential options that can make this very beneficial and an even better partnership by looking at some of these options.
Thank you.
Okay, next question, Councilmember Ross.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I look at this from a cost standpoint, annual revenue, 145K lost opportunity of revenue. We have additional cost of sharing officers. And three, it leaves an opening to increase staffing, so there's going to be a staffing cost increase to utilize of extra space. My question, and a couple of years ago, I walked through the Sammamish Police Department area downstairs, and there was a lot of people expressing concern about their space or that they needed more capacity. In fact, they receive people in the window outside of the police department, and they don't even have a private secured area to bring people in or out of the downstairs area for Sammamish police. So with that said, it quickly comes down to upstairs. If we're going to consolidate the sheriff into a smaller footprint, the freed-up space, I would logically think would be reserved for the Sammamish police to help with their space constraints. It would solve the Sammamish police capacity issue and also retain the advantage of on-site deputies without unnecessarily creating underutilized space. And I'm concerned that, I'm not sure that we do have projected staffing in the near term that would occupy it. So we need to really do a forecast, maybe up to a tenure forecast of staffing requirements. How do we accommodate that from a budgetary standpoint? I hate opening up too much space for staff when we can all, at the same time, better utilize the space for the collective sheriff and Sammamish Police Department. And that's a thought. And I don't know if I'm misspeaking, but Chief, if you, if I'm on to something regarding space for Sammamish police, and this is an option to help accommodate some of those space constraints, please comment on that.
I appreciate what you're saying. I actually believe, even with potential adds over the next five to 10 years, that there's a lot of wasted space downstairs in our facility that with different furniture and maybe some slight improvements in the front desk area, et cetera, could be managed more so than having to take over a larger space like upstairs. So.
Okay, because that's different than what I was told two years ago from staff, but thank you for that.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate it, but if you were to come down and I took you through and showed you how that space is utilized, there is a lot of dead space in our area that can be improved.
I want to take that tour. Okay, Chris, did you have any other questions?
No, that refuted what I was told earlier, which is helpful in looking at this, but thank you so much.
Councilmember Gamlin?
No, I'm good. I'm not in the queue.
Okay, is there any other questions?
How about we move to instruct the city manager to execute the 12-month notification, if everybody seems to want that?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I think everybody fell asleep.
I think so, too. Wake up, you guys, one more thing to discuss.
Come on, we can get out of here at 11:00 if we hurry.
We can, yeah, we got one more thing to discuss. Okay, so the motion on table, we've got a first and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, going through the vote. Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's like our third 7-0 vote tonight. That's like awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the last thing on the agenda was something added earlier tonight, and it was added, I believe it was added by Councilmember Gamlin?
Mayor Moran, we need to extend.
Okay, it is.
Do we really want to take up a new deep topic at 11:00 at night? A move we extend till 11:30.
All right.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm only hearing two ayes, guys.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Okay, so did everybody, I got to call that because I didn't hear one person. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Okay, she's the one I didn't hear. Okay, that was close. That was a 4-3. To extend, but we're still extending. All right, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Gamlin, this was yours, so I'm going to have you take it away.
Okay, so I've been revisiting some of the discussions that were had last year on the creation of the new concurrency and some of the back and forth that happened with staff and with council, with our city council and with our city attorney. And I have some really large reservations on how the process went to approve the concurrency certificate for Phase 1 on the Town Center. And so having looked at this pretty carefully, I'd like to make a motion to have council direct the interim city manager to initiate a formal investigation of the circumstances leading to the issuance of the concurrency certificate of Phase 1 of the Town Center and determine the legal status of that same certificate.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the table. Did you want to speak to your motion? I guess you did speak to your motion. And then we have.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yep, okay. Questions first up is Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so Councilmember Gamlin, I guess my first question is, what is our expected outcome of the investigation?
We don't know.
Well, the expected outcome, and I'll just answer real briefly, is I don't know. I'd like a third party, I'd like to instruct the interim city manager to have a third party look into the circumstances leading to the issuance of that certificate. I sat in the audience and watched it with my mouth hanging open. I revisited the videos from the meetings before and after, and I would like a third party recommendation or finding on what they think, the validity of that certificate based on what went into the votes and the policies that formed it.
So I guess, I mean, I have additional questions. I guess I'm wondering if our attorney, Mr. Eglick, and I don't know if he's still around or if he's dropped off his call, but, you know, getting insight from him might be helpful on an outcome, because an investigation that doesn't net something in the end, other than, so I'm trying to back up here. Originally, we were told there wasn't anything we could do. So if we do an investigation and there's nothing we can do, that's problematic. If we do an investigation and there's something we can do, that's different. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, and that's why I think the attorney's input might be helpful in the outcome.
And Council, I'll tell that, yeah, that would be the purpose of the investigation.
Okay, that helps me to understand kind of where you're going with this. But I wonder if our interim city manager might not be able to answer the question. Is Peter still on the phone?
No, he's not.
Okay. It would just be interesting to get his take on this before proceeding with an investigation. And I don't, it's not that I don't support where you're going with this, but an investigation costs taxpayer dollars, and if we can get the answer from the attorney, that might save those taxpayer dollars. Now, if he's like, I'm not sure, it depends on an investigation, then that's, you know, then we're right back here. So could we do, can I offer an amendment? I would like to offer the amendment that we first seek information from Peter Eglick on potential outcomes and if we need the investigation. I would just like to have his take on it. And if he thinks we need the investigation, then okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, now you guys are going to make me work again. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a first and a second. Kristi, you want to speak to your motion?
So mine was an amendment. But my, yes, I would prefer to understand from Peter, his take on this, right? We got a take on this already once before, and it wasn't favorable. So if he thinks that, I mean, asking him the question may yield a different answer from a different attorney, or he may say, in order to get an answer out of me, you need an investigation. But I would just like to have the opportunity to ask the attorney and save the taxpayers' the dollars potentially from an investigation that we might not need if Peter has the answer at hand.
Okay, now we do have questions. And yes, it is an amendment, but at 11:00 at night, it can be whatever it's going to be. And first question up is Councilmember Stewart, followed by Councilmember Gamlin.
So don't we already have an investigation outstanding on the whole concurrency model to begin with that we haven't even gotten an update on in like forever, and we don't know where that stands? Like, I just, I don't understand what we're trying to do here. Like, what's the end game? What's the goal? Why are we spending our time and energy on this when we're in the middle of a pandemic? People are out of jobs, which means they don't have health care, they're struggling to pay their rent, they can't buy food, and this is what we're spending our time and energy on? I don't even understand. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just, I don't get it. That's my comment.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that, I know it's 11:00, and I know we're getting punchy, that we keep our comments to the point and be constructive and concise. Councilmember Gamblin?
Two things. Number one is that, yes, people might be unemployed, and yes, we might be in the middle of a pandemic. That doesn't relieve ourselves as council of our responsibilities to go ahead and do what we think is best for our residents on this particular subject. That's why I offered this motion. Number two, as per the amendment, I'm fine with an amendment is as long as it gives the city manager the same direction that he can then go ahead and move forward with an investigation if there is input from the attorney, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ross, I'm going to ask that you please not be snide.
Okay. Number one, Councilmember Stewart took the words out of my mouth regarding the existing process investigation that we need to bring to conclusion. And I think Deputy Mayor's dead on in that we need to find out what we can or can't do, because if we're calling to question the ministerial duty, that's one thing versus process is another. So, we got to sort through that and make sure we have a focused area of inquiry that's consistent with legal.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
I think Councilmember Ritchie hasn't spoken yet, so I'll have to go next.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Hey, good morning. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out process-wise, and my thing dropped, my volume of my connection dropped for a second there, so I didn't hear all of Deputy Mayor Mauchow's amendment, that if the intent is to get information from the, one of our city attorneys, then, and then report back to the council before we make, before we move on this? Or are we saying we're basically abdicating and putting it up to him, and then based on what he says, the city manager runs with it? So, I mean, I guess I prefer the former, that we hear back either in executive session or an email or something to get further information from the city attorney on, you know, potential outcomes, legalities, the cost-benefit analysis of what this potential investigation might mean or do, and then report back to us at hopefully the next meeting? Maybe, that'd be great. We'll meet next week, right? So, we could kind of hold off on this until we know more. Before then, I don't think we should act on this until we know more. That would be my hope. And I'm not sure if that's what Deputy Mayor Mauchow's amendment was or not, so I'm hoping for some clarification on that.
My amendment was that we ask Peter Eglick, not the city attorney, on what we could anticipate, basically asking the question just of the attorney, like, what can we net out of a process that was maybe incorrect, right? I think Councilmember, former Councilmember Hornish was on the call earlier and pointed out some discrepancies between attorney, what we were given as advice, what happened, and kind of where we landed with all this. And I would just suggest that we be able to ask Peter Eglick for his take on it, right? If he gives us the same take that we got from our city attorney, then going forward with a investigation might be a moot point. However, if we get different advice, then it might not be.
I agree. I'm with you. I just want to make sure what we're, so as far as our vote right now on this motion and the amendment, are we saying to the city manager that pursuant to a conversation he will have with Peter Eglick, not the city attorney, Peter Eglick regarding the, I'll use cost-benefit analysis or whatever we want, regarding the information Peter would provide to the city manager, then we would essentially be saying, at that point, it's up to the city manager whether or not to proceed or not? Or would that information come back to us, and then we would have further consultations as a council to decide based on information?
I didn't preference that in my amendment. I mean, if you want clarification, for me, that's a different story, but I did not preference that specifically. That came from Councilmember Gamblin.
What did?
The, whatever it is he said relative to contacting the city attorney, I'll ask for Councilmember Gamblin to repeat it, if I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Okay, can we just restate the motion, the amendment, then? I'm sorry, I'm confused here. I'm trying to understand what would happen if we voted aye on this and what to expect. That's all, not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand the amendment and the motion. So, can we restate, please?
Okay, Kristi, can I have you restate the amendment?
I just did. It was simply to engage Peter Eglick before proceeding with an investigation to find out what we might yield, to find, I don't want to waste taxpayer dollars if we get the exact same answer we're not going to get anywhere.
Okay. Did that answer your question? Councilmember Ritchie?
No, I mean, I guess my, so what happens when that information, who gets that information? I guess more to Deputy Mayor Mauchow's to engage that...
It'll come back to the council.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you. That wasn't clear in the amendment, that's all I'm asking.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, it'll come back to the council. Okay, now we're going to go to round two, so then that would be Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so it's 11:11 at night. I feel like we don't need to make a decision other than to schedule at our next meeting an executive session with Peter Eglick and have this conversation, and then take it from there. I feel like that's the prudent course of action here. I don't think we need to vote on any investigations or approving the city manager to go spend any more money right now on anything.
But, okay, uh, okay.
So, I guess my request would be if Councilmember Gamblin would be willing to withdraw his motion for now and allow us to get that additional information to Deputy Mayor's point, and then we can just call it a night.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, no, I've moved. No, thank you, I'll stay with the motion that I made, please.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a amendment. There is an amendment, and there is a second. So, the amendment, the amendment that is on the table has a second. We've had discussion. I'm going to go down, going to go down the list for a vote. This is to have it sent to Mr. Eglick?
Eglick.
Eglick, and have it reviewed and have it brought back to the council. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
This is on the amendment?
This is on the amendment.
Senator Mayor? Yeah, nay.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
I'm not trying to be difficult, but if I vote on this, it still means that it's just amending the fact that we're going to do an investigation potentially, right? Without further council action, is that true?
Well, no, this is just, this would supersede, this would send it to the attorney. And if, it would depend on what he says.
But who decides what he says, how that drives the next action? That's where I'm confused.
Council does.
So, it's still going to come back to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I don't know. Aye.
Councilmember Trine?
Nay.
Is it? Okay, I'm going to say nay. Okay, the amendment failed. We're going back to the original motion. Please state the motion.
Motion is to have council direct interim city manager to initiate a formal investigation of the circumstances leading to the issuance of the concurrency certificate, Phase 1 of the Town Center, and determine the legal status of the certificate.
We have a question. Councilmember Stewart?
How much are we approving? Are we writing a blank check here?
I don't know how much it would cost to do it. I would, I believe that the city manager has a discretionary amount he can spend, and I'll stay within that.
So, $50,000. Okay, wow.
Okay, so, any other questions? Calling for the vote then on this, it's going to be Councilmember Trine.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross? Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauchow?
Yeah, I wish we could just ask the attorney first, so, nay.
Oh, okay, well, it goes down regardless, so there you go.
You still have to vote.
Okay, so I guess I'll say nay. Okay.
Can I make a new motion?
Pardon?
I said, can I make a new motion?
You can make a new motion. We're just going, we're doing that all over the place tonight.
No, it's the same agenda. I would like to direct the city manager to ask Peter Eglick about this.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I think we go the route where we, we've already retained this attorney, and we can simply ask him the question to find out if we get a same, a similar or different answer from what we've already heard. And if it's different, then we can, then I would be supportive of an investigation.
Okay, all right. Not seeing anybody queued up for questions. I'm just going to run for the vote then. Oh, do I have a second? Yes, Chris seconded.
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm going to run for the vote here. Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we have to do council reports and city manager reports. We're almost there. Councilmembers, is there any council member who has got a report? Hearing none.
I can defer next time.
Okay, city manager report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I'll make it quick. On parks and trails, parks and trails in Sammamish have remained open even when other agencies closed theirs. While some play equipment is still restricted, it is because we are unable to main the equipment in the cleanliness standards we think the public should expect. Our parking areas will remain closed and help keep the parks less full of out-of-area crowds, thereby keeping the parks less crowded for our residents. The fishing dock will remain closed as we do not have the personnel to monitor this attraction nor to monitor our parks for overcrowding. So, just pass on to everybody to please enjoy the parks and the spring air. Safe Start Washington. This is the governor's plan for a slow and safe reopening of our state to activities the governor has identified that may begin no later than May 15th in Phase 1. Phase 1 includes new activities of landscaping and lawn care, vehicle and vessel sales, pet walking, retail that is restricted to curbside pickup only, and car washes. Governor Ensley has directed his Stay Home, Stay Safe Directive be extended until at least March 31st. There have been, there has been also a recognition by the state legislature that our modified rules for OPMA and the Open Public Meeting Act also be continued. On CARE Act dollars, governor has agreed to share several millions of dollars with local government to assist them with budgetary impacts associated with COVID-19. The city staff is closely monitoring our expenditures and the approved uses that will be allowed with this money, and expect to have a more comprehensive account for the rules, regulation, and operational provisions for the city council at our next meeting on May 19th. Reimburseable expenditures are limited to public safety and essential personnel costs associated with COVID-19 responses and/or mitigations related in equipment and supplies such as personal protective equipment like masks, gloves, sanitizers, and assistance to nonprofit organizations responding to COVID-19 issues. There are still mixed signals as to whether we will receive the money directly or whether we will submit for reimbursement. We'll keep you posted on this. The traffic audit, the traffic model audit being performed by Transportation Solutions Incorporated is nearing completion. We will be organizing twos and threes for the council to brief you on all of the findings of the consultant's report. Once the OPMA restrictions lift, the council will also be able to discuss this topic in open session. And for the council, in the weekly, bi-weekly report, I sent a proposed new police department patch. Please take a look at it and let me hear from you and your thoughts on it. And with that, I wish you all a good night's sleep.
I am all about that, okay.
Now I move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, good night, guys.
Good night, Mr. City Manager. Good night.